I'll call to order the work session, the Wilsonville City Council of July 21st, 2025 at 5:00 PM. I will start by asking council members for review of the agenda and items on consent. Are there any comments? Seeing none, are there any council concerns before we begin our pre-council work session? Turning now to our work session, first up is Coffee Creek Land Aggregation Strategy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Matt Lorenzen. I'm the city's Economic Development Manager, and I'm here tonight to brief you on a proposed land aggregation strategy for the Coffee Creek industrial area and to request your direction on whether to continue advancing this work administratively to begin with. So Coffee Creek is one of Wilsonville's most promising economic development areas. It has zoning, infrastructure plans, and an urban renewal district already in place. You can see it on the map. After years of effort, however, we still haven't seen the kind of private investment or job density this area was envisioned to support. So what's the issue? What's the hangup? We're going to talk a little bit about that. We believe it comes down to essentially three things: fragmented land ownership, some challenging and sticky existing land uses that are approved under county policy versus the city, and then valuation gaps that make it very difficult for developers to get deals So I want to just highlight some of those past efforts. You can see by this timeline that the city has been taking consistent steps over the past two decades in order to promote development in this area. Still, in those two decades, we've only seen two major projects completed, with two more under construction now, while more and more land has been consumed during this same time period by low-value uses approved under county code. We can continue this current course and build some of the infrastructure projects included in the Coffee Creek Master Plan and Urban Renewal Plan with unknown development outcomes, or we can use the urban renewal funding that we have access to by virtue of the adopted plan to orchestrate the development outcomes that are envisioned for this area. If the council directs this evening to proceed with this strategy, time is of the essence to expedite development and preclude the further proliferation of low-value uses outside city limits in this area. And just to underscore the topic of timing, again, two decades have passed with not a lot of progress, and so something has to be done if we want to see that trajectory change. There are times when government needs to stay out of the way, and there are some times when government intervention is necessary when private market forces alone are not working. So why now is the question, and that's my response. So getting back to the three barriers that I was mentioning, the first of which is parcelization or land fragmentation. The land, as you can see, is chopped up into small, oddly shaped parcels owned by many different parties, each with their own timelines and motivations. And this has been a major obstacle to industrial-scale development, which requires sites, 10 acres probably at a minimum, but 20, 25 is more desirable in order to make deals pencil out for developers. In less common instances where you have an owner-user, like Precision Counter Tops, for example, they can work with a smaller parcel, and that's what we've seen happen. Just for size reference, the rectangular parcels that you see shown here east of Garden Acres Road, those are 10 acres apiece, so if that helps you sort of get an idea for scale. The different colors represent different parties of ownership. So it's quite the tapestry. The second challenge for this area is contractor yards, or what we call contractor establishments. We see many of these interim-type uses, which include gravel yards, pole barns, and low-value structures. They generate strong cash flows for the ownership with little overhead or effort on the part of property management or ownership. So what that means is these are sticky uses that don't easily give way to long-term industrial And then just to give you kind of an idea of what we're talking about, this is an aerial of the Coffee Creek area near Graham's Ferry Road and clutter. No pun intended. The last one, and this is the one that really is kind of the nail in the coffin, so to speak, land value discrepancies. So there's this persistent gap between what landowners believe their land is worth, and it's not just a belief. It's based on a valuation methodology called the income approach, which basically takes a look at how much net operating income that property can generate, and then uses that as a function to calculate what the value is. That's what the owner needs in order to be motivated to sell. Otherwise, why would they? And then on the other side of this, you have developers who are trying to look at a particular site, build out a development pro forma, which shows all of the expenses associated with constructing the project and then operating the project once it's built. They're able to back into an amount that they can actually afford for the land. And in case after case after case, that amount is lower than what a seller can justify selling for. So you have this gap, and no way to bridge it. That gap is really where the deals fall apart. So what we're proposing is a proactive targeted strategy to use urban renewal funds to purchase or option several adjacent parcels from willing sellers. So just to eliminate any question on that point, the imminent domain or condemnation government taking in this case is completely prohibited at all levels of government. So that's not on the table at all. This is all about folks that are willing to sell. The city would pay market prices, most likely based on that income approach valuation, assemble land into a development-ready site, and then issue an RFP for private development. We'd evaluate those proposals based on both the price offered and the alignment with the Coffee Creek Master Plan and other objectives which the council may direct. Then we would sell the land under a disposition and development agreement that would basically require that new owner to develop the property as they've committed in that agreement and which the city has approved. So as noted on the previous slide, there will likely be a gap between what the city pays to acquire the land and what a developer is willing to pay. But we now have a tool to help cover that gap. It's called the Regionally Significant Industrial Sites Program administered by Business Oregon. This map on the screen shows the sites that I was able to get approved under this program in 2023. And at that time, we were really just looking at infrastructure and how that program could be leveraged for infrastructure. More recently, I had meetings with Business Oregon and talked to them about land assembly. It's named as an eligible activity under the program, but it doesn't really give real specificity about what that means. And so I introduced this idea of being able to get reimbursed for this gap that the Urban Renewal Agency might incur in order to facilitate development, and left that question with them, is this an eligible expense? They came back and said, yes, it is. So under this program, once jobs are created on the site, so after the city has purchased, issued the RFP, disposed of the property, it's been developed, the state then reimburses the city for eligible site readiness costs, so that would be that gap. So even if we sell the land at a loss on paper, we're reimbursed once the economic development outcomes are delivered. So what are the risks? This is not without risk, but I believe those risks can be mitigated, and I think they're manageable. As I noted, the city would only be purchasing from willing sellers, and we would only do that after explicit council authorization, just tonight's meeting, and by no means direct staff to really do anything beyond just the administrative groundwork. The second point I want to elaborate on a bit, urban renewal spending capacity is unaffected. So the Coffee Creek urban renewal area has a maximum indebtedness of $67 million. We've expended, I think, between five and seven of that for the Garden Acres Road project, the balance of which was paid for through SDCs and the waterline project and a few other sources. When you spend money using urban renewal, the principal amount is recognized as going toward your maximum indebtedness. It goes against your spending capacity. So if we were to buy $10 million worth of land, that spending capacity goes down. The nice thing, however, under statute is that when we sell property, that property comes, that those dollars come back into the urban renewal agency's fund and can be re-expended without counting again against maximum indebtedness. So we could use $10 million once for an infrastructure project, or we could use $10 million once, get it reimbursed back to us through the sale of the land and reimbursement through RISAS, and then spend it again on either another deal or on infrastructure. But it sort of allows us to use the funds flexibly over time and sort of recycle a good amount of them. So the spending capacity and our ability to complete the infrastructure projects should not be impacted by the proposal I'm bringing tonight. Our city attorney would structure all of our agreements and ensure that we're not just flying by the seat of our pants. And then this last one I really want to spend some time on as well. The biggest risk, as I see it, is not doing anything here. The likelihood of the status quo shifting in some fundamental way, as I see it, is unlikely. And what we're more likely to see is the continued proliferation of these county-approved uses, which are going to preclude the development of that property and preclude the city from realizing really a good amount of property tax revenue from this area. So take that into consideration along with other risks. A good question that we often get from council on any number of topics is, has this effort been done before? Who's done it before? What can we learn from other jurisdictions? The most classic example of this model executed well was Ronler Acres in Hillsborough. And you probably know what's on Ronler Acres today, but that's home to Intel's headquarters and manufacturing facilities. So Ronler Acres has an interesting backstory. I'll give you the abbreviated version, but it's about a 300-acre area that was purchased privately. The city wasn't involved initially by a group named Fowler. And their vision was to subdivide this into 800 lots, sell them each individually or to investors that wanted to buy a group of the properties and profit. It's nothing wrong with what they were proposing, but somehow, and this is the part I'm a little unclear on, they were able to complete that subdivision, sell off all of these tiny, tiny lots, or at least a good portion of them, with no infrastructure in place and no commitment on paper to build that infrastructure. They sold all of these lots, and lo and behold, the infrastructure never was built, and this area was stuck in purgatory with hundreds of landowners and no way to actually build. The city would not issue permits to build anything without infrastructure in place to serve it and no plan to do so. So this area sat with no future. It was just lines on a map. And so the city of Hillsborough decided that they were going to be ambitious, establish an urban renewal area that overlays this area, and begin assembling these pieces back together again to create an industrial development site. And long story short, that's what they did, and they were able to sell off 270 acres to Intel. They did all of that before they had any indication that Intel would ever come. And I don't mean to suggest here that we're going to have Intel's HQ2 in Wilsonville, but I do want to just say that sometimes there are situations that are so convoluted it does require intervention to make things happen. And who knows, maybe HQ2 will come. Finally, next steps. So if council so directs tonight, the next steps are pretty modest. We would request an amendment to our RISAS contract and make land assembly a reimbursable activity. It's named in statute as a reimbursable activity, but not in our contract with the state of Oregon. So that piece would need to be done. We would prepare a minor amendment to the Coffee Creek Urban Renewal Plan, and we would really only bring that forward unless there was property identified that was going to be potentially purchased. It would just sit on the shelf as a template, ready to go until that time arrived. This is a bit in the weeds, but a minor amendment is sort of the lowest tier of amendments that you can make on an urban renewal plan, and it is just done through council resolution. I'll just also note that what we're proposing here is very similar to what was done with our WIN program, in that all of the administrative pieces were put in place in advance, and then it was just sort of there as ammunition in the cannon, so to speak, but not fired. Then, purely good timing, Twist Bioscience was looking for a site, and Wilsonville happened to have some real estate that they were interested in. Couple other places also had real estate they were interested in, but we had the WIN program and were able to tip the scales in this direction, and were able to quickly execute because all that administrative work had already been done previously. So this strategy is about unlocking the full potential of Coffee Creek, creating jobs, expanding the tax base, and supporting public services. Industrial development is fiscally efficient. It doesn't place demands on schools, libraries, or emergency services the way housing does. It produces stable, long-term property tax revenue that supports the general fund and helps future-proof our budget, which is an adopted goal of this city council. In conclusion, we believe that this is a targeted, cost-effective intervention that aligns with your adopted plans and with real-world market conditions. It's been proven in Hillsborough, at the Port of Portland, and the city of Portland in numerous instances. The one differentiating factor is that we'll be using RISAS support in order to realize that reimbursement I mentioned and have a chance to close the valuation gap in a fiscally responsible way. So tonight, what we're asking for is your direction to continue doing the preparatory work needed to make this strategy viable if and when land opportunities arise. That concludes my presentation, and happy to take questions.
Councilor Shavelin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Matt, for your presentation. Also, thank you for your report, your staff report. It was very well done. For some of this is all, this part was new to me, so it was well-written and easy to understand. As I was reading the first page or so of the situation, as you just outlined, why haven't we been able to move forward and attract the developers and the buyers? The first thing that came to my mind was, well, I wonder if there's some sort of incentive that we could offer? Can we incentivize the purchase of these properties in some way to be able to attract the buyers, the developers? So then, as I read on, I saw that you thought my idea was so good that you came up with it. Truly, the RSIS program, I mean, anytime you incentivize, there's always a bit of a risk, of course. You know, something, there has to be some money to put forward or some cost ahead of time. So as I read further into it, I just thought, wow, this is kind of what I was thinking when I was reading the first few pages of your report. Yes, there's risk, but there's risk in not doing anything, as you say. And there's just some preliminary steps we can take now to see, kind of putting toe in the water, I guess, to see whether or not we can move forward on this, and then you'll bring it back to us. But my question is, so we have some good stories, Intel, et cetera. Any that you're aware of that didn't work out from a city that tried this and did not have the outcome they anticipated?
Completely honestly, I don't know of anything that was some sort of utter failure. So the Port of Portland has done some similar work with their Gresham Vista and Troutdale Reynolds business parks. And there have been instances where the economy has shifted, or there have been other extenuating circumstances, and they've held land longer than they wanted to. But both Gresham Vista and Troutdale Reynolds are quite successful and full at this point. I'll tell you, when I worked for the city of Estacada before I came to Wilsonville, I did this on a micro level with a piece of property downtown. And right about the time the property was ready to be sold, the pandemic hit. And it was a retail restaurant property, and that was problematic. And so the city ended up holding that property for longer. But the good news is that meant that they could keep that tenant stable, they were able to stay in business, the city actually collected more rent revenue over that time period while they were, during the pandemic, and then were able to sell. Those are the examples I'm aware of. The city of Portland has used this primarily in an urban context, not as much for industrial. The Pearl District being an example. You know, they acquired the post office and have redevelopment ambitions there as well. But it's all the same concept of facilitating the outcome the city has envisioned by playing that role of conduit or intermediate between the seller and an eventual developer. Puts the city in the driver's seat as well.
Thank you. I think it's a good idea and could support this project.
Councilor Cunningham. Oh, excuse me, Councilor Dunwell.
Matt, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I have several questions, and I'm going to ask them all at the beginning. First of all, regarding the most recent evaluation, can you tell me the date of that?
Sorry, which valuation?
That $5 million valuation?
Oh, that was purely a number that was used arbitrarily. It's not for any particular piece of property. It was just demonstrating that oftentimes there's a gap.
So you're just spitballing it, so to speak?
Yes. I mean, there's no property identified at this point, haven't gone that far down the road.
Willing seller, willing buyer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Then the RISAS, is that dependent at all on federal funding?
It is not. It's lottery dollars.
Oh, wonderful.
State lottery dollars.
Have any developers stepped up and expressed interest on this already?
I have not done that work. Didn't seem appropriate at this point to go and solicit that input. What I can tell you-
Maybe not solicit, but are, you know, are they, are you hearing interest in, within the development community that that would be an attractive space?
Oh, well, 100% yes.
Here's the reason I ask. Because the REIT, the warehouse that was developed by the REIT out of LA-
Right.
-that's at the intersection of Graham's Ferry and Garden Acres, that sat empty for a couple of years. But it looks like it's occupied now.
It is. Yes, there's 50% that's now occupied and 50% that's going to be-
Yeah. I always get concerned that we're going to run into a situation like that. And I mean, they're paying anyway, correct? So it's really their exposure, not ours, in a situation like that. But having a developer who's willing to step up, do what needs to be done, and not have something like that happen again would be great.
Absolutely. And in an ideal scenario, and again, this is ideal, we would be disposing of the property to an owner-user, not just a speculative developer.
Perfect.
That would be the ideal. Doesn't mean that's what's going to happen.
Well, and then finally, just a comment, given what our city manager stated in his budget letter, that we will be in a budget shortfall. Faster the better.
Yeah.
This is the obvious choice for us to be able to move forward as a city and to be able to capture revenue. I'm really pleased that you presented this tonight, so thank you.
Sure. I'll just say one more word about is there demand for land in Coffee Creek? If there was sufficient infrastructure stubbed at the curb and lots that were of the right size and configuration, this land would have been sold 15 or 20 years ago. But that's not the case. I mean, if you think about it, all the conditions are right. It drains well, easy access to I-5, it's part of a broader industry network throughout not only Wilsonville, but Sherwood and Tewallatin. It checks all the boxes. It just is, the three things we talked about tonight have just been unfortunate.
And convince big trucks that that railroad bridge can't be.
Yeah. I mean, we'll leave that topic for another night, mate. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Cunningham.
Thank you for that presentation, Matt. So I think to your point of if things were kind of ready to go, you know, do you think this is something we're going to run into in Basalt Creek? Because I know that that's, and this is a little off-topic, but you know, it's something that's on our minds, is we've had a lot of meetings about Basalt Creek, and our planning commission has talked about it almost every meeting. Is this something that we think we might run into again up there?
Yes.
Okay. You know, and kind of to the idea of if the land was aggregated, if it was ready to go, it seems like they would be taking off from one end. I understand there is one developer that has aggregated quite a bit of land up there in Basalt Creek and is kind of waiting on us to give them a green light, and they're happy to take off and run with it. And if they had that same aggregation down here in Coffee Creek, it sounds like they'd be taking off and running with it.
Yeah. That same developer already owns property in Coffee Creek, but they need a larger adjacent site in order to make a deal pencil out, so they just hold it for now. But there's, they're clearly interested in working in the area.
Right. It talked about certain development industry jobs. Any, can you kind of give us a general idea of what those types of jobs would be under RISAS?
So the program doesn't specify any specific type of job, per se, but in order to be eligible for reimbursement, the wages have to be, I think, 150% of the county median wage. So it does set the bar at a reasonably high standard in order to be eligible for reimbursement. But here's the nice thing. It only requires 50 jobs at the site to hit that threshold. I'm stating this incorrectly. Let's say that there's 100 jobs created on a site. They're going to look at the 50 highest-paying jobs there in order to make sure that it meets the requirement. The 50 below it are disregarded. So when you think about the highest-paying jobs from management to some of the, you know, back office folks and things like that, it should be a threshold that we can meet here.
Great. And that probably would help, you know, typically, you know, we like to have those kind of high-tech, high-tech industry type of situations going on, rather than like a warehouse- a warehouse situation where you're not going to get quite the return. So, that would kind of push it towards that a little bit more?
I think what it would allow us to do is to issue an RFP that is geared in that direction toward an owner-user like we were talking about. I don't know if our first run at that would be successful, we could always pull the RFP back and go back again at a later date, but the state of Oregon maintains a site database they call Oregon Prospector, and we would certainly market the site there for highest visibility, make sure that Greater Portland Inc. is aware of it, make sure that Business Oregon is aware of it, so that in all of their outbound work, I don't really do outbound work as an economic developer, but as economic development agencies, they do. So, if we have a 20-acre site available in Wilsonville with all the things I was talking about, you know, access to I-5 and all the on and on, development-ready, we can then hopefully be selective about who ends up purchasing that property, and ideally, it would be one that's going to bring a lot of capital investment and high-wage jobs. Can't guarantee that outcome, there may be a situation where a speculative developer is our purchaser, but we could, I'll just say, we don't know exactly, that's the honest answer. We don't know what those jobs are going to be, but through the RFP process, we could put some, we could encourage those higher-wage jobs and higher-capex businesses.
So, then would we be taking on the risk of those jobs not appearing and that RISAS money not coming in?
Good question. Yes, but, yes, that's true. However, through the DDA, we could pass that risk through to the developer. So, when they purchase at that discounted price, they know that they're signing up for that risk.
Great.
It could be a shared-risk situation. That was another deal in Estacada that we did where we split it between the city and the developer.
Great, thank you.
So, just, I'm going to probably make a statement everybody in the room knows. The strategy does not expand the urban renewal district or seeking any new taxing authority. It's about adjusting how already authorized URA resources are used to achieve development goals that have otherwise stalled due to parcel fragmentation, is that correct?
That's right. We're not asking to increase maximum indebtedness, not the boundary of the area, nothing.
And we can set aside the risk of a failure of RSIS reimbursement in the existing development agreements, is that what my understanding is?
We can set aside the risk of a failure of, can you say a bit more about that?
Sure. The protections we can include in the development agreements, any risk if the RSIS reimbursements don't come through, is that my understanding to the developers?
Yes, so, in the RFP, we could state that as a condition of the DDA, and so that buyer would know going into it that they're taking on that risk, and that it would be passed to them in the DDA. There could be a scenario where the developer doesn't want to assume all that risk, and then we'd need to negotiate. But there's always, at every step of the way here, from the time we even identify a property, there's going to be opportunities to make sure that we're insulated from the risk at a level we're comfortable with.
And every time there is a proposed property, it'll be presented to city councils, so the public will have an opportunity to provide committee input if they want to.
That's right. It would be done through minor amendment, which is passed by resolution, and that's not just for acquiring property generally, that would be, the project amendment would state the address of the specific property and only authorize that property and no others. So, it'd be one amendment at a time if there were several properties that came into play.
Why support you moving forward with this? So, thank you.
I don't think my panel came. Thank you for your presentation. I thought it was really clear, and it makes really good sense to me. If we were to go forward with that, are there key dates or deadlines that would have to be met?
At this time, and I don't think there would be in the, I think before I speak here, I would need to go back and look at statute, but as of today, the RISAS program has no sunset on when the reimbursements are payable. So, if the legislature convened tomorrow and eliminated the RISAS program, they still don't have the authority to stop the reimbursements that were authorized while the program was still in place. And I don't know how that could possibly change, but I would need to go and look at the language exactly, probably with some assistance from the city attorney. But that's the way the language reads today, is that if the project is done while the program is in place, the state is obligated to that reimbursement until it's paid off, back to the city.
Thank you.
Shall I interpret that as consensus to move forward?
Say yes, go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next up is Public Safety Project Update: Enforcement Solutions for RVs and Abandoned Vehicles.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Amanda Gile Hinman, City Attorney, and with me tonight is Hannah Young. Hannah, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Hannah Young, I am the current acting law clerk here at the city, and I will soon be going into my second year at Lewis and Clark.
So, tonight, we are presenting on the Public Safety Project Update regarding RVs and abandoned vehicles. By way of agenda tonight, we are going to start with an overview of the council goal that prompted this discussion, and the questions that we are specifically asking of council tonight for feedback in this continued project. Then, we'll get into some background information that led to some of the proposed or draft alternatives that council will be discussing tonight. In particular, we'll be looking at potential updates regarding parking regulations and programs and abandoned vehicles. Then, we will touch upon a draft community outreach plan that was also provided to council and get council feedback on that, and then finish up talking about next steps and future considerations in the matter. So, just to keep in the back of your mind, we will circle back to these questions when we stop off at different segments. But first and foremost, what we're looking for is any questions or feedback from council regarding the alternatives, the parking alternatives that we are describing tonight. Particularly, are they the right ones? Are there any that you're not interested in us pursuing any further? Are there ones that aren't included that you would like us to review? And so, that leads into also, are there any other alternatives we should explore? And then finally, ending on any additional community outreach efforts or any revisions to the draft outreach plan that we've provided that council would like to see before we go out to the community. So, getting into some background, how this all started, I think council's pretty well aware that at our council retreat, the council settled on goal number two, which is around public safety. And the goal in particular wanted, talked about looking at, had an outcome that looked at streamlining the response to code enforcement issues. So, that was one of the two outcomes that was identified under that goal. For that outcome, five strategies were identified. The first of those strategy calls for the city to investigate enforcement solutions regarding RVs, and also put in a potential of looking at our abandoned vehicle definition in our city code. So, based on this strategy, staff looked at three particular topics. First was parking regulations, second was the abandoned vehicle regulations, and then third was what kind of plan should we have for community outreach on these issues? From that council goal, staff developed an interdepartmental team that consists of legal as the lead, police, administration, code compliance, community development, and then there are other departments or other government entities that will get pulled into particular strategies as they come up. So, we met as an interdepartmental team, and then formed specific subgroups for each strategy. So, for example, in this subgroup, the subgroup for this particular strategy around RVs and abandoned vehicles includes legal, administration, code compliance, and the police department as representation. When we all got together, the particular subgroup, we started to think about, what did we hear from council through the council retreat? What have we heard from community members? And what are we really seeing on the ground that's going on regarding RVs and parking issues generally? And let's start to talk through, what do we see as issues? Then, what we can do through an outreach strategy in talking with council is, do we have the issue right? We got to make sure that the problem we're solving is the correct problem. So, as noted on page 16 of the council packet, it's page three of the staff report, there's several issues identified. Because we want to be clear also with the community about what the city can and cannot do in this project. So, as council knows, you know, if there are vehicles parked in a private parking lot, the city directly does not regulate that. We regulate what occurs on our cities, on our public streets. We also identified that, you know, we do have this 72-hour parking limit citywide on our public streets, and that there are times where we get complaints where there's an appearance that a vehicle hasn't moved, but it has. It's just within the time that maybe somebody has seen it, it's in the same spot again. We also identified that because we have experience in towing vehicles, that depending on the type of vehicle, particularly around RVs, it can be very complex. RVs require a special tow company to come in, they require special storage, and we have to treat them as hazardous waste because of the gray water and black water tanks that are contained in RVs very often. So, there's a lot of complexity that gets tied into that, that we have to be mindful of as we talk about this issue. And also, you know, it's always good to make sure that as we're thinking about any new enforcement, we want to make sure that whatever we put on the books is something we can actually do, and that we have the ability, the administration, the administrative overhead to be able to do it, and the capacity to do it. So, what we ultimately settled on is, and I'm just going to read it, is that the current issue that we've identified as staff in our Strategy 2.1 subgroup, is that we want to proactively address any gaps in enforcement that we see of long-term RV parking that may exist to ensure the city can maintain the public health, safety, and welfare. That's really broad, and so what we're hoping is through these alternatives, well, it's really broad, so first, we want to make sure we got it right, and second, that through these alternatives, that we're really honing in on addressing the issue, at least as we've seen it. So, then I'll turn it over to Hannah to talk a little bit about the research that we also gathered through this fact-finding.
Absolutely. By way of research strategy, we began with initial research into similar local jurisdictions as Wilsonville, such as cities with like populations and community growth. So, this would be Tigered, Tualatin, McMinnville, and Sherwood. Research involved looking into existing parking ordinances in these areas, as well as code updates or programs. We also looked at parking permit programs, if they had them, and any new definitions within their vehicle code. Next, we moved on to RV parking programs in particular, and identified that the four current jurisdictions in Oregon that have an RV parking permit program already in place. And so, those four are Gresham, McMinnville, Kaiser, and Sandy, Oregon. For that, I reviewed past council meetings and adoption testimony hearings for all of these jurisdictions. I also contacted each jurisdiction and was connected with code enforcement departments in each to discuss efficacy and implementation of each program, which we will later go further into.
So, additional background information and data collection that we did, I wasn't aware of this until I started this project, but our police department maintains a monthly report that looks at traffic and parking complaints, and puts it into essentially an Excel spreadsheet. They've been tracking this data since May of 2022, and since June of 2022 is when they started putting in a comments field that further described the particular issue or the particular complaint that was being called about. So, initially, it was, you know, just a simple like parking or traffic, the location, the date and time, it wasn't, it didn't have a lot of specificity to it. But with the notes field, starting in June 2022, you could better discern what the actual complaint was about. Yeah, well, Mayor did go ahead. Sure.
The, I'm concerned that we, and I think you've already done this, and I think you're a step ahead of me, but if you just look at those numbers, they look quite low. And I think we would, I would hope that we would all agree that we don't make our decisions based upon these actual numbers, because if we use this as our primary measurement, it means that at least one citizen became so frustrated and so inflamed that they decided to call the non-emergency number to report it, or call the city. How many others were frustrated, saying this wasn't a good place to live, all of those other things? So, I don't know if you asterisk that, or whatever you do, it should just say that this is likely not the actual number of concerns, they're the reported concerns.
Yes, absolutely. And this is only data collection from the police department, they're the ones that track this. This doesn't include what our code compliance officer receives as well, unless it's a specific referral to the police department, then it is included in that report. So, it's definitely not representative of total community concern about this issue, which is why the community outreach is so important. And I don't want this to be seen as reliance for assumptions to be made. I think what I took away, at least when I was going through the data, was, is there an opportunity, potentially, to address more than one issue? Because we are getting call volumes about multiple issues. So, for example, I would say that there are certain community members who get just as concerned about semi-trucks and commercial vehicles that park for extended periods of time in their communities, because I see the same address over and over and over again. So, what I more took away was not, oh, this is a higher priority than, this type of call is a higher priority than another type of call because it has a higher volume, more so is, is there the potential for solving multiple issues at once? And to keep that more in mind, I also thought, and maybe, maybe as this, because this data has only existed for three years, maybe as the data exists for a longer period of time, if somebody did want to do the same review I did, is initially, I thought I would see spikes, because in the first two years, I saw spikes, particularly at the start of the summer and over the holiday break on extended parking, which made sense. Like, kids are home from school, or people are home for the holidays. That played out in a couple of years, but not the third year. So, I can't really say it's a trend, but it'd be interesting to know is, do we see higher numbers on certain types of calls at certain types of year because of what is going on in the world, you know?
I just was, I'd like the idea of addressing other problems besides, just as the RVs number looks extremely low to me. I just think that there is also those people that are frustrated that don't even make the, and take the steps to call. And they voice it on social media, or they'll contact maybe us offline, but there's no record that we can keep, so I like those ideas.
Yeah, thank you. So, we, and you'll see, we've only summarized a couple of data points here, there's several more data points in the council packet that looked at a lot of different types of call, parking calls that we get, so particularly around 72-hour abandoned vehicle calls. We put those together because usually, an abandoned vehicle call, well, not usually, all the abandoned vehicle calls were calls because a car was parked too long. So, it was just how they classified it. So, we lumped those together, but then we also included calls on private parking lots. So, most often, those were, not all the time, but often, they were calls that related to an RV on a private parking lot. Public, the city parking lots, we also tracked that, semis and trailers or commercial vehicles, because there were several calls about those, and then RVs as well. So, we wanted to look at sort of a whole spectrum of calls around parking that the police department tracks. So, that information is provided, you'll see that the total average is, for 72-hour abandoned vehicle calls are around 11 a month, but they definitely fluctuate. And then, the average calls for RVs are around one to two calls a month, but again, those definitely fluctuate month to month. We also did a comparison, a percentage comparison, of looking at these, the 72-hour calls and the RV calls compared to all parking calls, and then total calls of all the traffic calls that police, the police department tracked. And that, and the 72 hours made up almost 28%, and the RVs made around 1.5% of those And that, and the 72 hours made up almost 28%, and the RVs made around 1.5% of those calls. Again, fluctuation from year to year. So, oh.
Can I just clarify? So these are numbers from the police department. And do we, do you know if the code compliance is tracking numbers also?
The tracking of, the tracking generally could occur through our CRM or email complaint system, but that data wasn't, usually what it is, is he gets a phone call, and that isn't as directly tracked like these are, like this data is.
Okay, thank you.
So that's why I say these numbers aren't representative of every call the city as an entire entity gets on any type of parking issue. That's definitely the case. So is there any other questions about the data or the background research that was done? We do have the charts in our staff, attached to our staff report of the research that Hannah did as well. We'll get into a little bit more detail on the specifics, but we'll head into the parking regulations now. Okay. So there are four different alternatives that we've looked at with regard to parking, you know, RVs and abandoned vehicles. Three of them are tied specifically to parking regulations or parking programs, and one is geared towards abandoned vehicles. So the first one that staff has examined is the 72-hour plus, we call it the 72-hour plus 24-hour. So in citywide, on city streets, we have a code provision that says that no vehicle can be parked for more than 72 hours in a specific location, then they have to move at least three vehicle lengths. What we have seen on the ground is when we are, there have been times where we have, there's been a complaint about a vehicle, and particularly RVs, and we go out, staff goes out, we make contact, the person leaves, and then they come back 30 minutes later. And we don't, technically, they have complied with our code, because we don't have a mechanism to say how long they need to be, they have to leave before they can come back and park in that same location. So I will say this, so what we've discussed internally as a team is looking at a minimum amount of time that a vehicle must be away before it has, it can go park in that same location. This is, as far as we can tell, relatively novel. This is not something that we have found in other jurisdictions that they do. Most other jurisdictions that we've reviewed have a standard 72-hour rule, just like we do, with a minimum distance that you have to move, but they don't have a minimum timeframe that you have to be away before you can come back. So what we're finding a lot, and this happens a lot in the notes that I saw from the reports, was, you know, there will be contact made, and there's either evidence of, or the person say, says, well, I left for work, and I just came back before the other person came back. They just didn't see that. That puts us in a really precarious position, because if we have to go cite somebody, we have to be able to go into court, we have the obligation to prove that this person has violated our 72-hour rule. And if we don't have evidence, they were there the entire time, we're going to lose that case. So this felt like a potential way of addressing some of the larger situations, not only about RVs, but maybe some of the other parking calls that we get, of, you know, a minimum amount of time that somebody needs to be away before they can return back to this, to the location.
Can I ask for a clarifying question very quickly? They could move their vehicle to the other side of the block, be there for 24 hours, and come back.
Yes.
And they would be in compliance.
The way that this is written, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I understood. Thank you.
So, and I think you're going to get to one of our cons on this. So, so the pro of this is, generally speaking, all that's really required from an administrative overhead or an enforcement standpoint is really doing an update to the code and providing education to our code compliance and our law enforcement about this new standard that is part of the enforcement. The downside is, is we don't know how successful it is actually going to be in potentially resolving some of the complaints that we're getting. And given that there's not an example out there, there's not another city we can call to say, did you see a significant reduction in complaints of long-term parking when you implemented this measure? That's the reality, is we don't know if the efficacy is there for this. So I will also say, with any of these, while not, generally speaking, they're, within these different alternatives, it's not like you only can choose one or another, there is a potential of hybrids throughout all of these. Yeah. So this is one that we've, that we've started to explore as one alternative, based on some of the things that we've seen on the ground as far as enforcement goes, and some of the gap that we have in our current code language. The second one that we looked at is around zoning designations. So again, currently, there's a citywide 72-hour limit for how long you can park on a city street. So one of the alternatives that we've looked at is zone-specific parking time limits. So basically, depending on where the community is falling, as where do they see the need for the shortest amount of time, that zone could be treated differently than other areas. So if people are less concerned about longer-term parking or 72-hour parking in the industrial area, maybe that keeps a 72-hour rule. And maybe if people are more concerned in residential area, it could be a shorter amount of time, like 24 hours. I would say, again, this is relatively novel, we don't see this in the other jurisdictions that we examined. What you see, to the extent that there's any shorter duration of parking time, it's usually tied to a commercial area, like a downtown or something like that, where it's very short. It's two hours versus a 24-hour, 48-hour time period. So not a lot of evidence out there of whether or not this would be successful, but it was something that we talked about, given that where we hear more concern is usually tied to business areas or near parks, that kind of thing, or people being concerned about their neighbors parking outside their houses for too long of a time. The advantage of this approach is that we can address the specific concerns in each area, or more narrowly tailor the area, the parking time limits to areas of concern. The cons of this is, there's going to be a lot of education that we need to put out, because it can be very confusing. And, you know, we think of it in terms of residential, commercial, and industrial areas. Well, I think we have something like nine different zones. They're not that, they're not that simple, right? So there's a lot of, especially in this day and age, there's a lot of areas that allow residential, that are, you know, zoned a more commercial designation. And so there would need to be a lot of education. We'd really have to work on minimizing the confusion for the community, which likely means that we'd be looking at introducing additional signage, which has a cost to it. There's also, you know, there's always, there's very limited space in our right-of-way for things like signs, and utility boxes, and streetlights, and all of that stuff. So it poses a lot of challenges from an administrative perspective, and from an enforcement and education perspective. But it is an option that we've looked at. And then I will turn it over to Hannah to talk about the RV parking permits.
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, Wilsonville does not have any RV parking permit program in place, which I'm sure you all know. The only comparable program currently implemented in Wilsonville is the existing residential parking program, which seeks to achieve similar goals, but differs a lot in actual implementation than this alternative. There are more details about the existing residential parking program, including costs and overhead administrative burden and everything in the staff report under the RV program. Parking enforcement currently is also, as Amanda mentioned, largely complaint-driven. And currently, what we have reported is the mentioned RV parking complaints making up around 3% of total calls over the three years. As I understand, during the council goal-setting retreat, one alternative that was discussed was the possibility of implementing a program like this, similar to those already in practice in, as I mentioned, Gresham, Sandy, Kaiser, and McMinnville. The RV parking permit program would require RV owners who wish to park an RV on public streets to apply and obtain a free 72-hour parking permit, and this would be obtained through the city's website and then printable from home. Per what we have seen in other jurisdictions, these permits would be subject to several conditions, including a renewal process for single permits to accommodate for longer stays, but no more than a total of six permits may be issued to a single owner within a year. Additionally, there has been some flexibility built in, where a 12-hour unloading and loading window would be available without requiring a permit. For enforcement under this program, an RV does, if an RV does not have an issued permit, or cannot be verified that it belongs to a lawful tenant or property owner, citation notice may be left, alerting that within 24 hours, the RV must be moved, after which the city will gain the right to tow. Some of the positives is if the city does adopt this program, but maintains a mostly complaint-driven approach to enforcement, there will likely not be any additional administrative burden to Wilsonville's code enforcement departments. In jurisdictions where compliance efforts are vigilant and self-initiated, self-initiated by code enforcement, this program offers a streamlined approach to RV removal by the notice and tow. However, reported compliance from discussing with various code enforcement throughout the jurisdictions has been very mixed. These mixed reactions are attributed to several variables, though. Overall, enforcement and compliance is largely driven by the capacity of each code enforcement department. Efficacy of this program, therefore, is difficult to measure. Some concerns that we've identified around this program include the risk of overregulation without solid evidence-based outcomes from the jurisdictions where these programs are currently implemented. Furthermore, this program also risks creating additional workload for community members who own RVs, while not addressing the central issue of leaving RVs in public streets for extended periods of time. Some costs associated with these programs would include possible additional expenditure of towing RVs. As Amanda mentioned, this is very expensive, can be up to $7,000 to $10,000 per tow. And budgetary adjustments then therefore may need to be considered as part of implementation.
We're about to move on to abandoned vehicles. So if there's any, we, there will definitely be time for further discussion, but if there's specific questions maybe, or clarifications around the RV programs that currently exist in other jurisdictions, we're happy to pause for questions.
I do have questions. I do have questions. When I look at the, in your section B, so between number, number one for me is a no-go, just it doesn't seem to work, it feels very similar to what we have currently. But number two, on zoning differentiation, and three, the RV parking permit, my concern about the RV parking permit is it only covers RVs. So there has to be also a solution for every other vehicle. Because, you know, when I, when I was reading this, what kept hitting me was, Wilsonville has grown up. If you look at the ordinances when they were put in place X number of years ago, this wasn't even on the radar. And there are certain individuals that aren't renting, they are not homeowners, that almost seem to enjoy a cat and mouse game with the city on moving their vehicles. And with all great compassion for those that are truly homeless, there's also, there have to be consequences. And we are in a position as a city where the ordinances give us the teeth and the strength to be able to. It's sort of one of those things, if you've got the RV, and nobody's ever doing anything about it, then suddenly you've got three RVs, and they're not sitting in the I-5 rest area anymore. Hey, we're moving around in Wilsonville. You start towing one, word gets out really fast. And I think about that in LA. You know, they've got signage everywhere, you can't park here, this side of the street, this day, things like that, and word gets out. Oh, they towed my car. Suddenly, it becomes a much bigger issue. So I would like to see the teeth, I would like it to see, apply not just to RVs, but also something that also applies to cars. So I would really like to see us explore a hybrid model on the parking itself. That being said, people go on vacation. You're gone for two weeks, car's parked down the street, you've just violated the rule. Your car may not be there when you get back. So how do we circumvent that? Are there special permits that a homeowner or someone who's living can access, or a waiver or something like that? I don't know how you do that.
So just so I'm clear, when you say a hybrid model, are you saying that you want a permit program for any vehicle that's going to park on city streets?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Okay, that's fair.
I'm just asking the question, Brian. I don't know the answer to that. And yet I'm saying that, so, and I'm using this from actual experience, because yesterday when I drove through the city hall parking lot at 2:00 in the afternoon on a Sunday, there were a bunch of RVs. There were also a bunch of cars, and those people were clearly living in the cars. Now, I don't know if they're part of the cat and mouse team around Wilsonville, but the parking lot seems to be pretty active more and more. And are they just playing, you know, trying to move here, and then there, and then here, and then there? And maybe that's something we have to tolerate as a city, because every city does it now. Or is...
That's our designated area for them to be.
And the question is, though, is they're there during the day, and then they're there overnight, and then are they there again the next day? Right, we're dancing on the head of a pin here, right? Because you are, they can park there during the day. And yet, a lot of those folks look like they're living in their cars. So...
Well, I know, we're kind of sidestepping, but I do want to say, and because I think this is true for anything the council decides, what you put on paper doesn't matter if there's not the ability to, if there's not the capacity to do the enforcement. So I think the reason that it looks different, I mean, to be frank, the reason it looks different Monday through Friday is because we have a very vigilant code compliance coordinator who every single person who utilizes our parking lot knows. And that is different on the weekends.
That is a great answer. So, and I appreciate that.
Can I supplement that by saying, yet we're not here on the weekends? We could, I guess we could have the police enforce it? But there's unintended consequences to enforcement. So the reality is, they're in a place that's safe and visible. If we come in and do a sweep and tell them they have to leave, they're going to go somewhere.
Yeah.
So I just think...
It's that balance of compassion and enforcement. Because I will always step up to the plate on compassion, and I think everybody in the city knows that about me. And yet, we do have to have an enforcement element, so.
Right, yeah.
I'll leave that up to the smart people in the room.
And I will say too, because we're about to segue into the abandoned vehicle discussion, so I think there may be, and it may be somewhat valid, there's a, I think there's a concern amongst community members that nothing gets done. And while it may feel that way, we do take action. So in the last, last, I think it was last month, or the, or within the last two months, we towed two RVs that were on city streets for extended periods of time. And it was an expense that we incurred and utilized our very limited budget to do. We used another provision that's available to us, which is tied to expired registration tags, for them being on city streets and having extremely expired registration tags. So that did occur, that did occur. The, another person who basically had expired tags that we, that we went and made contact with, left that day, and has not been back. And another person who has valid tags and parks very regularly, moves his vehicle every night into a private parking lot.
You're saying there's a direct correlation, then, between the expired tags and the...
Very often there is.
Okay, good, thank you.
Very often there is. And so, but, and this gets into our abandoned vehicle definition, is that is not, in many jurisdictions, expired tags are part of a definition of abandoned vehicle, and it is not in our definition. So we utilize the county code, the sheriff's office utilizes the county code regarding the registration tags, which is how we've been successful in towing those two RVs that I mentioned, so.
One, one thing I would ask is the, what's the outcome when something, RV is towed to the owner? Do they have to go to the towing company, and do they have to pay the cost? How does that work for someone that, say, is houseless, relying on that RV for a home? I'm just curious.
Yes, yeah. So they would have to go to the place where it is stored, pay to get it back, and in all likelihood... likely, I mean, generally, that does not happen. And so then part of what the RV cost is, is the storage and demolition of the RV. So...
So a houseless person could end up, who's violating this, would lose their home?
Yeah, so for example, on one of the toes that we did, that we knew was a person who was unhoused, who has obtained services through our local nonprofit service providers, before that occurred, we reached out to those nonprofit service providers to let them know that this person may be seeking some additional assistance, because we are going to be towing the RV.
So we're going to need to really, if we implement something like this, we really need to promote an education and warn them ahead of time. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Other questions, just, we'll have time for discussions. Okay. So let's move on to abandoned vehicles.
So our next identified alternative was to implement updates to Wilsonville's abandoned vehicle definition. Currently, Wilsonville Code defines an abandoned vehicle as one that has been left unoccupied and unclaimed, or in a damaged or dismantled condition, such that it is inoperable. The current removal process requires notice and an opportunity for a hearing before an authorized officer may then tow after the 72-hour mark. By further specifying and expanding this abandoned vehicle code definition, law enforcement would then have greater clarity and discretion to respond to complaints. For example, Sherwood most recently adopted language that, to define an abandoned vehicle as one that has been left for up to 48 hours, and satisfies any one of the following conditions, being, one, being expired tags, the other appears to be inoperative and disabled, or three, appears to be dismantled or junked. And I believe that appears-to-be language is very important in providing flexibility to law enforcement in order to enforce that provision of the code. Incorporating language that allows for any one condition to trigger a notice and removal processes then provides law enforcement with more actionable criteria, and then streamlining response times, and ensuring that there's consistent application of the code. If we implemented this alongside other provided alternatives, such as that 24-hour minimum before returning to park that we described previously, code updates to both, how long a vehicle must be removed before it returns, and expanding the criteria to determine whether or not a vehicle is abandoned, would provide a comprehensive plan for response, and, from both law enforcement and code compliance, to address community concerns surrounding parking of all vehicles, RVs included. Normal administrative costs that can be expected with this are just those that are associated with publishing ordinances, and providing updates to all relevant public agencies, such as Clackamas County Sheriff. Furthermore, enforcement efforts specifically must, may need to be rigorous right at that outset. As you mentioned, Counselor Dunwell, with giving enforcement teeth, it might need to be rigorous in order to support that compliance and show a visible impact in our community.
So circling back to the two questions regarding the alternatives, and again, what we're looking for today, really, because the next step is going to be a public engagement process, is not necessarily council saying, we want this one, I mean, unless you're all there, but I don't think you're all there, is really, are there any of these four that you have questions about, you want to provide feedback on, you'd like to see further refined? Are there any other alternatives we should explore? Because really, this is what's going to help inform the outreach to the community, is, so then council will get some feedback on the alternatives that council wants to see feedback on. So happy to answer any questions or take in feedback on the alternatives, and also any other alternatives that council's interested in.
Hannah, great research.
Thank you.
That was excellent. The depth of what, all of the research that you did to provide us, all of your notes in particular, gave me such a great visual into what our other cities are doing, even though we may not necessarily know all of the success. My question would be, is there one of these that stood out for you, or for our city attorney, Gail Hinman, that on the RV, on the RV parking permits, that seemed to be the most doable for a city like Wilsonville?
Yeah, absolutely. I think Amanda and I have discussed quite in-depth what we think might be the quote-unquote easiest. I do think that it's going to be the cheapest to have code updates, and I think that that is an excellent place to start, personally, because of the kind of low-cost, high-reward potential in all of these updates. And as I mentioned with, including implementation with different code updates as we move through council goals, especially with abatement and other things like that, I do think that having a strict but flexible, which is kind of a contrarian, but I understand that, having that option for law enforcement in order with that definition, where any of those conditions may be triggered, in order to initiate that notice and tow process, is probably going to be what I find the most successful. But that is just personal opinion. Off of the research that I have done, I think that that would be an excellent place for council to start.
You stated on page eight of your staff report that, you know, if the city adopts this program but maintains a mostly compliant-driven enforcement, there will likely not be any additional administrative burden. Are you recommending, based upon everything, that we remain with a complaint base, or are we moving towards? I know what I want as a counselor, but I'm really, you all have done a deep dive into this, so I at least want your perspective on this.
I think that we could say, pretty definitively, out of the cities that have a more successful program, they have more code compliance officers. And, I mean, we've talked about, our code compliance officer does an amazing job, and really has a good pulse on what's going on. If we implemented something like this, in my opinion, that would be too much for one person to handle, with all the other code compliance that, issues that we have outside of vehicles and parking. So I think that, and that's why one of the, one of the slides at the end is going to be, depending on what council decides, we want to be very upfront at the get-go, that based on what you decide, there may need to be a resource allocation to implement. Because again, it's not worth, in my opinion, it's not worth council going through that whole process just to find out that we can't actually do the work, because we don't have the capacity to do it. So, like, for example, Gresham, Gresham's a bigger city than us. Gresham has a very proactive approach to this, they have more staff allocated for it, and I think across enforcement generally than we do. McMinnville has two code enforcement people, so I think there need to be a discussion about what compliance, what resources look like, if we want to take a really proactive approach on an RV parking permit program.
And it could be a bridge thing. We could try Plan A. Plan A doesn't work, you can go to Plan B.
Absolutely.
But you have more time to plan for additional resources.
Exactly.
Because it would require more person power.
Yeah, it would be great to understand what the expense would be, budget-wise, on something like that.
Yeah, well, I think in terms of additional expenses, it would be based on how many additional...
FTEs.
FTE we would need to implement that program.
Yeah.
To monitor it, and are you going to do weekends, are you going to do evenings?
Yes.
It depends on the level of enforcement that you want. The more enforcement, the more expensive.
Well, and it goes back to what I believe our North Stars are, fiscal responsibility and quality of life. Sometimes you have to sacrifice a little bit of the fiscal responsibility in order to have quality, because if we don't have quality of life, people don't want to live here. And so we have to be, you know, there has to be that place where we can meet in the middle. And so I...
Yes.
Easy to talk about, difficult to implement sometimes.
And the only, the only thing I'll just mention is, weekends should be covered, because I think that we have a lot of people that spend most of their time during the week commuting, but on the weekend, they appreciate our community. So they're the ones you're probably going to get the focus on.
Changing the language would allow the police department to do the weekend coverage, if they have more flexibility in terms of those definitions, I think that would resolve that issue.
Yeah, the other thing that I would just note from an expense standpoint is, like I said, right now, we don't have, we don't have dedicated funds for the, outside of what we pay for our staff, we don't have dedicated funds for the expenses tied to enforcement. So for example, when we have to pay $10,000 per tow, that is coming from other allocated budgets. And so if we are going to take a more proactive approach, there, there needs to be a discussion about, should there be a dedicated fund for those expenses? Because it can add up very quickly.
At least, in my former city, we had a code abatement fund, that was just general to anybody that had to pay a penalty to the city, that money just sat in that line item, and could be used for any abatement action. So that might be something that internally we could do for next year's budget.
Thank you. In addition to the quality of life and fiscal responsibility, though, we're also trying to find that balance, and Counselor Dunwell already said it, between compassion and compliance. So it's kind of a four-legged stool, if you will, but it's a tough one, because we want to be compassionate, we know we have laws that say we have to have space for people to be able to stay, and yet, I like the teeth, whether we call it teeth, accountability, is really what it comes down to, is just holding people accountable. So I feel badly that someone's RV had to be towed, and it's probably their primary residence, and put them in a really difficult situation, and yet the word gets out that that's what the city's doing, and then we are able to show that we are going to be accountable to our codes. Thank you.
There are ample resources now for folks that are in need of housing through the supportive services stuff, and we have connections to help them, if they want help.
Yes. And there, as this discussion furthers, again, we're not at the point of getting into all the nuance of it. There is nuance because of the state laws that regulate camping, and we have to be mindful of that as well. And also, to the point of the supportive housing services, those, those funds are set to, generally are set to sunset in 2030, '31, coming up. So there also needs to be discussion of, if that, if that funding source that we currently utilize goes away, you know, is council interested in looking at that? But that, those are all much larger discussions, I think it's just important to keep those things kind of in the back of mind as we talk about an immediate issue that council's identified.
Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you. Going back just a little bit in the conversation, it feels like we're underplaying a little bit how much our police force can be involved in this, and take up some of that, where we don't have to look at hiring more FTE on the code enforcement side. This is a, you know, this is stopping and, you know, in my mind, we would begin with education. We would go and contact the person who is, you know, violating the, whatever we come up with, whether it's a permit, and they don't have one in their window, their RV, they go out, they knock on the door, I would love to see them start with education, because somebody rolls into Wilsonville, hasn't ever been here, they have no idea that we have this system in place. So go out, make sure that we have a really good informative pamphlet or something like that to hand them and say, hey, here's the deal, you got to have this, if you don't have it, you can't be on the city streets. So starting with education, so that we do hit that compassion point, that pamphlet, pamphlet can include information for heart of the city, it can include the resources that we have around here, so that if they need, you know, 10 gallons of gas to get down the road, let's get them that 10 gallons of gas and get them where they need to go.
Cheaper than towing.
Absolutely. Yep, 10 bucks worth of gas is a lot less than $10,000 in Tofus. But starting with that education, and making sure that we do lead with compassion, and we work towards whatever the solution needs to be. But really, a partnership with our law enforcement, making sure that they are proactive about this, and motivated to enforce these things. You know, heck, one of our great deputies can make a pop project out of this, problem-oriented policing, where they go and they create the plan, and they go out and they look to really get after this, and really kind of take that on in a personal way. It's a, it's a great way to address community concerns, and to go out and find a way to be proactive. So, something like that, but I have talked to some citizens who it sounds like were very, are, the communication somewhere, there's a breakdown somewhere between the police and the private side of security at some of our local businesses, where someone's not understanding how it's going, and there's kind of two sides to every conversation, but just making sure that our law enforcement's well-informed and educated on it. I don't know if it's because, you know, we do tend to have a little bit more of a transient law enforcement presence here, because if somebody goes on vacation, we get somebody who wants the overtime from county, and they might not know our local ordinances. So that can create a little bit more of a stress. But really, just making sure that our law enforcement is, knows that this is a council priority, and something that our community really cares about right now, and would like to see addressed before it gets out of hand. But yes, I think that, I don't know that we necessarily need to go for more FTE on a code enforcement side, when we have a really good police department who can, I think, handle a lot of this. Also Hannah, thank you very much for that report and your research. It was, like Counselor Dunwell said, it was very easy, especially to go through those different other jurisdictions with the, the kind of intent and purpose and the notes that were in there. It seems like we're kind of leaning, from the staff report to that research that you provided, it seems like we're kind of leaning more towards that Sandy model, if I'm reading that right. And so, yeah, and I think that a hybrid model overall with, with, you know, the updating our code, making sure that that's really clear and delineated, and that would give our, our law enforcement the tools that they need, that are very clearly laid out to go out, take the enforcement action necessary, and ensure that we are a, we have order, and we're not having issues to kind of get out of control here. Thank you.
I would just say, I like the education piece that Counselor Cunningham mentioned. In all fairness, the chief of police isn't here, so I don't know if there would be a budgetary concern there for the contract.
I don't think it'd be a budgetary concern, I think it's more of a, you're a former police officer, you know how call volumes work, and you know priority, prioritization of calls, so it could be that they maybe pass by an RV, they get out to talk to that person, they get radioed, they're off.
Right.
So, within reason, yes, I think the police department, I think they need more flexibility with our language, there's nothing holding them back, other than that. So, that's why I say we can always recalibrate, try, try this plan, and then...
See how it works, yeah.
If we need more resources, for whatever reason, then we could come back to you and have that conversation.
All right, thank you. Any mails?
I'm not sure why mine's not lighting up.
Well, I don't know. Sorry about that. You're getting, you're getting... You get a waiver, City Council President Berry.
Thank you. Great report, and I appreciate all the time and effort that was put into it. Have we identified, like, are there certain areas of town that are experiencing these problems with either abandoned vehicles or RVs?
So I think that there are some, some that get a lot of attention, but it is spread out throughout the city. It's, I think there are places that get more eyes on it, so particularly, when there's been RVs parked near town center, or right near Wilsonville Road, those get, those have a lot of visibility. But as far as, you know, when we talk with David, who is one of the people who is on this interdepartmental team, and when I look at the calls that we, that, from these reports, it's all over the city. It's, it's not necessarily concentrated in one space.
But it does tend to be in the more highly-trafficked, visible areas that we get the majority of the complaints, and in residential areas.
A lot of people call in the industrial areas, too.
Right.
Surprisingly.
Yeah.
Yeah. It varies, it really varies, yeah.
Well, the reason I ask is, because on this side of town, when I drive by, you know, occasionally, not too often, I'll see an abandoned car, but then like a day or two later, there'll be like a little tag on it, and then a day or two later, it's gone. So from my experience, it looks like it's being handled really well, but I really like the city's approach about the education, because you talk about that all the time.
Yep.
That when we're doing code enforcement, that we first want to make sure people understand, you know, what, what are we trying to do here, and why?
Yep.
And help them, help us achieve that. But anyway, again, I appreciate your report, and I like the approach. Thank you.
Yeah, I will say that for both our current parking regulations, and also our camping regulations, we actually already have educational pamphlets that we provide whenever anybody is noted as being in violation. So creating additional education for whatever ultimately comes out of the council will not be an issue to, to create. We've got some examples we can pull from, so. Are there any alternatives, I think I maybe heard from Counselor Dunwell, are there any alternatives you don't want feedback? Are there any alternatives you don't want feedback on that you want that council, at least the majority of the council, is not interested in pursuing? Or do we want to hear input from the community on all four that we've talked about?
Well, maybe another way to put it is, are there ones that you just don't want to do?
Yeah.
Because why put, why get into the community if that's a no start?
I don't usually speak my mind, but the first one.
Okay, the 24-hour.
Yeah, I just sense see that struck. It feels very similar to what we currently have.
Any mails?
Is there anyone else who's?
I would agree with Counselor Dunwell on that, that it, I think it just turns it into cat and mouse 2.0, where you move down the street and then you move back over and just kind of play that game, so.
Any other counselors not interested in that?
I support the direction we're going.
Okay. The direction of removing option one.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so we're not going to include option one in the outreach?
Correct.
For feedback, okay.
Like more problems than...
What, I'm interested about the zoning differentiation. Is council interested in looking into the zoning differentiation?
Yes.
Okay. And then the RV program and the abandoned vehicle definition, those are all good? Okay. So move forward three of the four. Are there any others that we have not discussed that council's interested in looking at? Let's move on to the outreach.
Absolutely. So our next identifiable step is going to be to connect with the community and receive inclusive feedback on our research by conducting outreach with our communications department via Let's Talk Wilsonville. We plan to conduct community outreach in four ways. First, starting with educational information, followed by a community questionnaire, and then stakeholder interviews that we'll talk about, and then as well as interviews with those impacted. For educational information, staff plans to develop an overarching summary of the current issues, the goals the city seeks to achieve by completing the questionnaire and to provide relevant background information regarding the city's current code enforcement and capabilities. This will precede the questionnaire on Let's Talk Wilsonville. But then upon completion of the questionnaire, participants will then receive a thank you for participating email to their inbox, along with included frequently asked questions to provide additional information, and so we're not inundating them with a wall of text right before they get the questionnaire. With that, that leads into the questionnaire, which we plan to, we have taken examples from previous outreach efforts and for similar programs regarding livability in Wilsonville in order to develop draft questions for a community questionnaire. The goal of this will be to receive engagement from the wide range of community groups and areas in Wilsonville. Staff is currently working with communications on developing quality questions and ensuring that posting will be widespread in order to reach as many residents as possible on current concerns that community members have been facing and while also allowing for participants to rank their support of the varied alternatives that we've laid out tonight. Finally, we would develop a list of pertinent stakeholders based on the research efforts on whom may be most impacted by code updates and any new programs. This list includes public agencies for enforcement, local businesses, RV owners, individuals impacted by homelessness who might be living in their RVs, and HOAs for the residential areas. We have designed individualized questions for each group in order to ensure engagement on the most pertinent data and concerns from each category. And finally, the staff team has also discussed conducting in-person interviews for those that feel, or that are currently impacted by houselessness with, in regard to RVs that, in areas that would be, feel safe to them.
So our final question for feedback tonight is regarding the community outreach. Are there any outreach methods that council would like to see us do or any revisions to what we've proposed as our outreach effort? And I will caveat this with this is something that staff internally is conducting, so to the extent that you are seeking anything that might require an outside consultant, we have not budgeted for that. So take that with this question.
I'll just say that, you know, this is an attachment four that you provided.
Correct, yes.
It's one of the most thoughtful and balanced plans I've seen, considering it's internal, didn't cost us extra, and I'm very supportive of it. I like the multiple strategies, no support, no single approach may work citywide, so I like that idea. The engaging equity partners, taking care not to rush into code changes without first listening, I think is important. So I appreciate those things. But I would, I personally support the public engagement strategy as you've prepared. Thank you.
Couple of questions for you. The, on page 44 of our packet, I noticed on question six, just because this will be going also to, this is going to be open to the community. What I think about some of our planned communities like Villebois, that you would also want to have that nice little addition into number six, homeowners or residents using their garages for other intended purposes because that requires people to park on the street. Not that that's something that needs to be cured, but it has been something that's come up over and over again because that does impact the availability of parking spaces. And then I would make the assumption, am I correct in making the assumption then on the proposed changes section, that'll be modified based upon our conversations tonight?
Yes, right, yep, absolutely. So what I put was a G, garages being used for purposes other than vehicle parking? Or I could say off-street parking, or off-street spaces being?
Yeah, just as one of the influences as to what makes parking, and I know that we ran into that in the past with Villebois when they were looking at doing some expansion there with some apartments who were like, we don't have any parking. They actually do. So, yeah.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Cunningham?
I was looking at the stakeholder outreach section on page 47. Why is the library board involved in RV parking?
So our library is a place where sometimes we have some RV parking issues. So that and the community center are places where sometimes we have to do some enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's also, it feels a little odd to me that part of our outreach is for people who are experiencing homelessness in their RVs. You know, when we talk about stakeholders here in our community, you know, these people aren't people here that have interests in our community or anything like that, and so I question why that would be part of this outreach and part of any of the calculus that we would have in making these decisions.
I'll just, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just had coffee, oh, about a month and a half ago with someone who is houseless but whose wife, who lives with them, actually works in Wilsonville. So we do have some circumstances where they may not geographically have a home here, but they do, they are workers that actually work here. So, and that's one reason why I think it's helpful to have that input.
Well, I think that's covered in the page 44 of the packet. In the community questionnaire, there is the live, school, work, visit, business. And anybody who wants to come in and be a stakeholder in this would be welcome to do so in that way. I just question the extra step of going out and making it so that, so that that's part of the calculus.
I do think maybe, I'm reading the questions, and maybe a question that we're missing that kind of gets to what you're getting at is why, what are the barriers, what are the barriers that are keeping you from more stable housing? Because we do have mechanisms for, to connect people to county services, and this could also then be a tool to better understand, is it, are there barriers that we're not aware of because we're not having those direct conversations? The conversations that staff are currently having are about our parking requirements or our camping requirements, right? It's not necessarily about what's, what is the gap that we're seeing in getting you connected to services or to more stable housing, so.
Right, and I think that that has been, some of the contact with our code enforcement officers has covered that, and he, I believe that he sought to understand some of that and to get them to the resources that they need to get to. You know, when we're talking about this, I think it's important that we're clear that this is about, you know, the parking of RVs, large vehicles, abandoned vehicles and things like that. It's not necessarily about homelessness or camping or anything like that. That's a separate and distinct issue from what we're addressing here, and it's actually something that we can't control, if I understand it correctly, because that's already covered by state law. So we're looking at talking about RV parking, large vehicle parking, kind of nuisance parking issues rather than homelessness in this discussion.
Counselor Shevlin?
Thank you. I think the key when we're collecting the data is to not take any particular person or group of people, take it for granted. So we would be, I like the idea of, yes, we're not necessarily out looking for who may truly be houseless and can we get them into the right resources, but it's secondary information that we may be able to channel someone into the right place. So I don't want to discount the fact that we can get good information that we may be able to act on to support someone in that type of situation. And then secondarily, just as far as the library, yeah, there are some, there are vans, they're more the type of van, I see the red one there a lot. So it may not be what we might consider a large RV, but that one's there a lot, and I know there's more than one. So those are the ones that are also being tracked and monitored. Thank you.
Yes, actually, one of the items that gets more into the nuance is about how do you define an RV? Because that does matter. Yeah. I guess, I think one of the things that we always, that generally staff strive for when we do any sort of outreach is that if we are going to be regulating something, we talk to the people who are going to be regulated. So maybe it's not individuals impacted by houselessness, it is about if you own an RV because you will have new regulations put on you if it's adopted. Is that maybe, or is, is council, would council prefer that be the approach, which then would be more encompassing? It'd be a broader group than what we're talking about on page 51 of the packet.
But the problem is they might not technically own it, maybe they're borrowing it from a possess.
Possess.
But I think it's really important that we include them to better, we can't solve a problem if we don't understand the problem, and that they're going to help us have better understanding of the problem.
I'm not sure I have a consensus on this last page, or I just, I need a good majority here of, are we good with at least RV outreach specifically to RV owners? Like we're doing specific outreach to HOAs and business owners and other public agencies and the like?
When you expand the definition to include all RV?
Or RV, people in possession of RVs.
I like that, like that idea, that adjustment.
Well, I, but that begs another question, is, so how do you access those folks that are living in their RVs or the RV, how do you reach them specifically?
We're going to have our, David's going to reach out.
But if it's going to all RV owners?
Well, you'd be surprised how many people call on their neighbors for having their RV parked outside too long, so we'll be able, we'll be able to have a pretty good list.
We don't know all owners of RVs, but we know the ones that have called in and complained. But we'd also advertise this far and wide, so folks that do own RVs would be able to provide input via the various communication and survey.
And we can also let law enforcement know if they make contact with anybody who, you know, because somebody's complained or they're out and about and there's something about an RV that, you know, we can give them a flyer to hand out about contacting the city on this project.
So when do we cross the line with this RV questionnaire of asking a question to provide us data points and to, versus getting into a social services availability discussion? Because shouldn't that be handled by, through our camping ordinance and administrative rules? So what I was wondering is, is why not go in, when I look at question number three under community questionnaire, how would you describe your living area? I live in a vehicle. Having that as an option.
We can make that an option.
And, but I just don't know if, I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish by the rest of those questions that are specifically to the houselessness, because those are questions that if they're reaching, if our co-compliance folks are reaching out to them and having those conversations on supportive services, don't we already know a lot of that information?
If they avail themselves of the service.
Why would they avail themselves to this versus?
There's no guarantee that they would, yeah.
So that's what I'm wondering, is this an empty exercise to try and reach out to those folks just specifically for this rather than inviting them into the community conversation? Because if they're not accessible, they're not accessible.
Would you have that same feeling if it was, I guess that's why I'm wondering about stepping back and saying, if what the focus is, is on regulating RV parking on public streets, I think the staff recommendation is that we need to talk to people who will be regulated by that regulation.
So we're not distinguishing between people that own homes that park in their driveway versus people that live in their RV and park on public streets?
So the questions on 51 will change. I guess that's, the questions on 51 will change.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
That broadening, that solves the problem, I agree.
Okay, I'm realizing also that we still, we still have executive sessions.
Are we any?
So I just, real quickly, I've already talked about just keeping in mind the financial components that may be at play when we talk about updates, larger code enforcement updates. We are going to go into the public outreach and then we'll come back to council probably in early 2026 and start working on, doing some work sessions on potential code language based on, you know, input from council and the direction given from council. This is also a smaller timeframe within the larger context of Goal Two, so you will be seeing other work sessions that come up regarding Goal Two within the time that this, that this staff is doing work on this behind the scenes. So happy to give, provide updates if council wants, but there will be some other items that are coming up on Goal Two.
Quarterly.
During this time.
We provide quarterly updates.
Right, we do provide those quarterly updates, too, so.
Good, thank you.
It was a big topic.
Big topic.
Yeah.
Even for only one of five. Okay, I think we have good direction moving forward. Appreciate the council's time.
The work session is adjourned. The city council will meet in executive session pursuant to ORIS revised statute, section 192660, subsection two, paragraph eight. Legal counsel litigation and consult with counsel concerning illegal rights and duties of the city with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Members of the public outside of representatives of the news media, please exit council chambers. We'll take a five-minute break. We'll take a five-minute break.
I call to order the meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for July 21, 2025 at 7:10 p.m. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Shevlin.
Here.
Counsel President Berry.
Here.
Counselor Cunningham.
Here.
Counselor Dunwell.
Here.
Mayor O'Neill.
Here. Please stand and let's join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel President Berry, can I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
I move to approve the following order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion to approve the following order of agenda has been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all enjoying your summer so far and doing your best to stay cool during the stretch of high temperatures we have had. Fortunately, we are enjoying a bit of a reprieve today. I also hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July. The recent heat waves remind us how important it is to look out for one another. If you or someone you know doesn't have air conditioning, Wilsonville has designated cooling centers open during the day, including the Wilsonville Library and the Community Center. For information, just dial 211. And please check in on neighbors, especially seniors, people with disabilities, and young children, who are most vulnerable during extreme heat. Also, don't forget our community members of the four-legged variety. I had the pleasure of attending Wilson's Juneteenth Celebration on June 19th with Counsel President Berry and Counselors Dunwell and Shevlin. We are honored to welcome Governor Tina Kotek and First Lady Amy Kotek-Wilson, whose presence underscored the meaning of this day, not just as a historical milestone, but as a continuing commitment to freedom, justice, and belonging. It was especially meaningful to hear from both Governor Kotek and keynote speaker Ty Harden-Moore, and to see the active participation of the Wilsonville High School Black Student Union, including speakers Tristan Hamilton and Corin, excuse me, Corin Timmons. Special thanks to our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee for organizing this uplifting celebration, and to our sponsors. The platinum sponsors were Swire Coca-Cola and Oregon State Credit Union, and our silver sponsors were Clackamas Community College, Wilsonville Campus, the Oregon Institute of Technology, and Parkway Grill. Their support helped create a powerful space for culture and connection. Thank you to them. On June 28th, I attended the annual Korean War Remembrance Ceremony, joined by Senator Courtney Nouran-Missland, Counsel President Berry, and Counselor Shevlin. For those that don't know, Wilsonville is home to the Oregon Korean War Memorial and Interpretive Center. This year's event marked the 75th anniversary of the start of the Korean War and the 25th anniversary of our memorial located in Town Center Park. Among the honored guests were Counsel General Eungji Saw of the Republic of Korea, Counsel General's Office in Seattle, Dr. Edward Kimmy, Henry Consul in Beaverton, Counsel President, and the Kia Daniels Director of the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. During the event, Ambassador for Peace medals were presented to nine veterans or their families in expression of the Republic of Korea's deep gratitude for their service in preserving democracy in that part of the world. It was a powerful reminder of what enriches life in Wilsonville, our veterans, our Korean American neighbors, employers, workers, and our shared values and friendships with our allies and friends abroad. July is Disability Pride Month, a time to honor the history of achievements and contributions of people with disabilities. This celebration began in 1990, the same year the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law. It not only commemorates that milestone, but also promotes greater awareness, inclusion, equity, and belonging. Wilsonville is stronger because of diverse voices, talents, and leadership of people in our disabled community. July is also National Park and Recreation Month, a reminder of how vital parks and recreation programs are to healthy, connected communities like Wilsonville. Wilsonville offers a first-class system, 15 public parks, nearly 200 acres, with trails, water features, picnic areas, and more. There's something for all ages and abilities. So take a break from the screens, head outside, enjoy what the parks have to offer. This past Saturday, I joined residents for the Hearts of Wilsonville Bike Tour, visiting all 10 Hearts installations throughout our city. The theme "Many Cultures, One Heart" celebrates the diverse artistic, cultural, and historical identities that shape our community. Each heart tells a story, and together they reflect what makes Wilsonville such a vibrant, welcoming place. I encourage everyone to see the hearts, but more importantly, learn about the artists' meaning behind their creation. Their narratives are very compelling. Since our last meeting, I continue to participate in numerous regional, community, and constituent meetings, which are a matter of public record and in my written materials. I won't discuss them this evening. Turning to a legislative update, the 2024 Legislative Session wrapped up on June 27. A record 3,467 bills were introduced. 704 passed are now headed to the governor's desk. Senator Courtney Nouran-Missland will be presenting her report on the session during communications in a few minutes. I want to thank her during an extremely difficult session for helping us secure on behalf of the city 1 million in funding for design and engineering on the Boone Bridge replacement, a critical step on a project that is critical for Wilsonville, our state, and interstate commerce, and security. Unfortunately, no transportation package was passed. As you may have read, ODOT has begun staff layoffs. A revised proposal may come during a special session, possibly as soon as this week, though the details are still evolving. If it even happens, it is expected to be significantly smaller than the proposed HB 2025. I'll only note two bills of special interest to Wilsonville that did pass. HB 3031, which established a fund for local infrastructure supporting affordable housing, such as our Beckman sewer interceptor. And also House Bill 2411, which creates an industrial site loan fund to prepare land for industrial use. With only 10 million statewide, competition will be high, but we're well positioned to benefit. Upcoming meetings and events. Later this week, I'll attend the annual Clackamas County Coordinating Committee Retreat with Counsel President Berry and Counselor Shevlin. The agenda will focus on housing, transportation, and transit, and how our jurisdictions can work together to speak with one voice. I'll also attend the Clackamas County Chair and Mayor's Meeting and the Metropolitan Mayor's Meeting in the upcoming, excuse me, in the coming weeks. We have numerous events in the community during the summer. I encourage you to go to the city calendar, wilsonville.org/calender. Also, check out many of our local organizations, including the Wilsonville Rotary. The Rotary Calendar can be found at wilsonvirolivery.com/events. I will name just a few of the upcoming events in my remarks tonight. Each summer, the Wilsonville Rotary holds an outstanding concert series at Town Center Park. This Thursday, July 24th, between 5:30 and 8:30 is their next concert, which will include 18-year-old alternative rock artist Kalen Moore at 5:30 p.m., followed by Kalimba, a nationally acclaimed 10-piece tribute band that brings the music of Earth, Wind, and Fire to life, with a full horn section, stunning vocals, and classics like "September," "Let's Groove," and "Boogie Wonderland." This is a summer concert you won't want to miss. Also, our annual Movies in the Park continues this year. Our Parks and Rec team is hosting three free movies. The first is this Friday, July 25th, featuring Moana 2 at Town Center Park at dusk, bring a blanket and chair. Tuesday, August 5th is National Night Out, a night of neighborhood block parties and emergency responder visits across the country. National Night Out is a national public safety initiative developed to build trust and camaraderie among local emergency responders in the communities they serve. Here in Wilsonville, our police and TV FNR firefighters will visit local gatherings between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. If your neighborhood is hosting an event, please register by this Friday on the city's website, or email billevans@ci.wilsonville.org.us. My family, I had an enjoyable time last year. Lastly, please save the date for Party in the Park, which is Thursday, August 21st, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. with live music, food, trucks, games, water features, and fun for all ages. I'll only note that our next city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 4th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. Now, turning to communications. It is an honor to welcome back our state Senator Courtney Nouran-Missland, first elected to the Oregon Legislature in 2018. Senator Nouran-Missland was appointed earlier this year to represent Senate District 13, which includes Wilsonville, along with Tigard, Sherwood, King City, and other surrounding communities. Throughout her time in office, Senator Nouran-Missland has focused on the issues that impact her daily lives, from education and transportation to housing, community health. And she has done so with a strong commitment to listening to local voices, especially here in Wilsonville. We're fortunate to have her as part of our community, and we're grateful to have her with us tonight to share highlights from the recent legislative session, what it means for Wilsonville and our region. Senator, welcome. And I see you also have a guest.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor. And may I invite my guest?
Yes, please do.
All right. Dr. Representative Sue Ricky Smith has joined us today. Thank you so much, Mayor O'Neill, Counsel President Berry, Counsel Member Shevlin, Cunningham, and Dunwell. It's so good to see you all tonight. I'm honored to be able to be here to present some of my reflections and highlights of the legislative session. And yesterday, when Representative Ricky Smith and I were at the Sherwood Archery Event for the Robin Hood Festival, we discussed joining together tonight to be here in solidarity to present to you. So this is a presentation that I put together, but I'm honored to be joined by her today. So thank you for joining us.
And thank you for being here.
And so I am Courtney Nouran-Missland. I began the session as Representative Nouran, as you've said, and you shared a lot of what's in my presentation, so I'll gloss over as much as I can. And then, as you mentioned, I became Senator Nouran-Missland, adding my legal name to the title as we go forward. So I served in the House until, from 2019 to 2025, and then with the passing of our honorable Senator Woods, we, oh, and there's supposed to be a picture of him, too. We, sorry, I don't know how this is working. What are we looking at? Okay. When Senator Woods passed, I pursued the appointment process and was appointed to the Senate. It's an honor to serve in the Senate on your behalf. And then Dr. Sue Ricky Smith was appointed to the House of Representatives. So we are your legislators, and we have just realized tonight that we have double last names, so we have two legislators with two last names. The left side of this slide is some past information about me. The right side of the slide is more current information. And you see the image of Dr. Sue Ricky Smith and Ben Bowman. And I are the legislators for the Senate District. The Senate District is King City, Matzger, Tigard, all of Tigard, and Sherwood with South Beaverton. And I had tried to make it so that you could see the, yeah, there we go. The representative district that we are in is this, so Wilsonville, Sherwood, and King City. And then the addition of all of Tigard is the Senate District, so that's the area that I serve. And I came into the Senate as the committees were winding down their work, so I look forward to committee assignments coming up. But I still am a member of many caucuses, including the Democratic Caucus, Child Care Caucus, Rail Caucus, Environmental Caucus, and the Arts and Culture Caucus. In the interim, we are in interim right now. We, as your legislators, continue to do constituent services. We do ongoing policy work, work groups, meetings, task forces, and we spend a lot more time in districts, at outreach events, festivals, tours. Tomorrow, we're touring a composting facility to understand waste streams for food waste. Professional Development will be attending conferences. And then we will have legislative days three times before the next short session in February. So September, November, and January, we'll convene in Salem again for three days outside of session, part of interim, where we have reports delivered to the legislature, informational hearings, opportunities for additional oversight, and we can discuss the ideas that we might see in the short session. As you've mentioned, there's a possibility of a special session. I would say it's a high possibility for a special session focused on transportation. Now, special sessions can be just one day. They can be longer than just one day, but work is happening right now to determine if we are able to address the transportation challenges of the state right now. So my legislative focus and Wilsonville's legislative focus have a lot of crossover, of course. Wilsonville really uplifted the need for advocacy in transportation, childcare, housing. And I've had many conversations with you all about behavioral health and safety. That is a top priority throughout the district, so I really want to acknowledge that, and I do have a slide for that. And then capital construction projects. What are the things that we really need the state to come through for to ensure that we can deliver those projects for our communities? There's a lot of details in the slides that I'm about to present. I will gloss over them, but my understanding is that you have access to them, that you can go back, you can click on some of the links that I've embedded. You can ask me questions if you want me to come back to them if we have time for questions afterward. But I'm going to go as quickly as I can, so it will look like I'm really glossing through some of these, because there's a lot. So just because it would be like an elephant in the room if I don't really address it, I want to make sure that I go a little deeper on the transportation priorities that we've advocated for this session. When I say "we," it's in partnership with the cities and the counties that I serve, but also Dr. Sue jumped right in. And we have been really uplifting the need for 50-30-20 distribution of funding, the need for safe routes to schools to be prioritized, the Great Streets Program and what that brings to our communities, and including specifically in our Senate District, the need for us to improve Hall Boulevard so that we can complete the jurisdictional transfer to Tigard. And then, of course, we've got the Boone Bridge conversation that has been ongoing throughout my service, and I want to thank Mayor O'Neill for his partnership and meeting with me and Congresswoman Salinas to really discuss our plan for moving forward. Outside of the transportation package, I asked for $1 million to advance that project. That did go through. So even though the transportation project did not, a package did not advance this session, we will be advancing with $1 million toward the Boone Bridge for their next steps, and that's on a later slide. We also uplifted the need for transit investments west to Salem as a regional bipartisan priority that we continue to discuss. Fair distribution of stiff funds is a critical priority. And then the Highway 99 conversation, and you know it doesn't cross through Wilsonville, but from Banning's Pie House up in Tigard down to the edge of Newburgh at the winery there, that is 99W in the district that I serve. So I think a lot about the safety of the crossings, the, how it's a Portland-to-coast essentially freeway, but it's our local road to get to the Walgreens or the school. So we use it for many things, and we do need to continue our conversations around 99W and road safety in general throughout the state and our district. I focus a lot on early childhood. I'll celebrate that we passed perinatal services. We expanded allowable locations for childcare facilities, which I worked with the city of Wilsonville to advocate for, so want to appreciate your partnership there. We expanded allowable preschool locations as well, and we are finding background check efficiencies. I helped set up the Department of Early Learning and Care in 2019, and I continue to support it. I'm also celebrating that the passage of our outdoor preschool licensure program has had a successful rollout and was passed in 2023, but is in effect now. Housing and homelessness is a top Housing and homelessness is a top conversation in our district and across the state of Oregon. We can celebrate the fact that we have investments in pre-development loans and housing infrastructure funding. A lot of what we are talking about is what is in the ground and how that supports communities building affordable housing above ground. We also need to be talking about not only building new inventory, but preservation of existing affordable housing inventory, so that we're not losing that inventory as we bring more onboard. So preservation of manufactured home communities and publicly supported housing, it has been a concerted effort that I've been uplifting. As well as making sure that we have senior-friendly communities and disability-accessible housing, we've invested $24 million to develop, rehabilitate, and preserve housing. Now, the two bills here on the bottom are ones that some of you may have been watching. The Shot Clock Bill, as Senate Bill 74 was so named or referred to, did pass unfortunately. Representative Ricky Smith entered the House of Representatives after it had already gone through the House of Representatives, and it came back to the Senate for concurrence, where I was the only no vote of the Senate. But I am hearing our cities and the concern for being able to have appropriate public process and decision-making level at the cities. We have cities in Senate District 13 that are very proud of the housing that they're providing and would like to have a little bit more control over that rollout. Again, the pre-approved building plans in 2258 passed despite consistent city opposition. There was a lot of effort to listen to cities, but ultimately, I was still a no vote, as was Representative Ricky Smith in her service as well. So we are really hearing you and really trying to balance both the need for adding housing to the state of Oregon and the importance of working with our local communities to make sure that there is appropriate oversight and process, so that you can have some management over what the community looks like as we develop and grow smartly. So I'll go a little bit faster here. So we've blocked some runaway cost increases with -- specifically with the utilities on this slide, the Fair Energy Act. And my apologies about the formatting of this. It's a little bit hard to read, but we'll try to get that fixed. The Fair Energy Act and then the Performance-Based Regulation of Public Utilities, and also the Power Act, which is protecting Oregonians with energy responsibility, will hopefully continue to bring down or mitigate cost increases. So these are policies that center the public interest, not just profits. They make sure that there is a real analysis of cumulative effects of the cost increases of utilities and that there's oversight given to the PUC, the Public Utility Commission. And then this last one is where we really see that we've blocked it so that residential customers will not be paying for data center energy usage, so we've protected that way. In terms of other cost increases that we've tried to address in the state of Oregon, our manufactured home communities in our district have been very consistent in telling us that the cap was not working for them on rent increases. They own their homes, but not the land, and the rent on the land was increasing exponentially, destabilizing a very vulnerable portion of our population. Many seniors on fixed income are living in our manufactured home communities. So we had excellent advocacy and ultimately were able to put a 6% cap on the rent increases on that land. We also banned hidden online junk fees, and we also are looking at ways that we can keep the transportation package reasonable while we invest in communities. We need people to understand those dollars are investments in the communities, in the economy, and making sure people can get to work and to and from the places they need to go. However, we need to do that responsibly, and one of the things that I've been advocating for on your behalf is making sure that we're keeping tolling out of the conversation for the Boone Bridge. Healthcare is another area that we've done a lot of work. This presentation is by no means comprehensive. The hundreds of bills did pass. There are many that I am not mentioning in this policy, but I will mention some things that I'm excited about: international licensure pathways for physicians, workplace violence prevention, making sure that private equity and corporate ownership of healthcare are mitigated, and that we have more doctor-owned decisions in healthcare, and that we have comprehensive reproductive healthcare insurance for OEB and PEB for perimenopause, menopause, and postmenopause. Now, that is a huge thing that we can celebrate that we've achieved this session. In terms of economic development, there's a lot we could talk about, but I do want to dial in on something that Mayor O'Neill mentioned in his introduction, and that is Industrial Sites Readiness Loan Fund. Hospital 2411 invests a significant amount of money. Now, it might be 10 million. I had seen 40 million, so we'll make sure that our number is correct.
My number may have been...
I think the takeaway, too, though, is that it's not actually enough, either number.
Right.
We know that if we -- and I'll read your testimony here in a minute. If we invest significantly, it leverages, it's a force multiplier for the economic investments that we can draw into the state of Oregon. So in Mayor O'Neill's very effective testimony, he said, "Wilsonville is one of a dozen local governments across Oregon that has pre-qualified with Business Oregon for the regionally significant industrial sites, a complementary program, for development of the 258-acre regionally significant Coffee Creek industrial area, which is anticipated to host over 1,500 jobs with a $130 million-plus annual payroll that requires over $45 million in infrastructure investment." So our regional loan, our district alone, requires $45 million to draw out that $130 million-plus annual payroll. This is what, again, similar to the housing conversation, what's in the ground can really draw investment above ground. We want to be attracting industrial and economic sites. So I've included a map there of some of our industrial areas and regionally significant industrial areas, which we have a lot in Senate District 13. In terms of behavioral health and safety, I'll highlight a couple of areas, including domestic violence survivor rights. We've removed timelines for child abuse and sexual assault, so those reporting timelines are no longer. That is a huge win for people who take time before they're ready to report something that's occurred. We've also closed a loophole that denied justice to domestic violence survivors. In terms of addiction and recovery, such an important topic. We worked with Washington County to make sure that there are stronger penalties for dealing fentanyl and access to funding and expanded addiction services in Senate Bill 236. A lot in that bill that if this is an interesting topic to you, I would recommend pulling that bill up and reading that. We also have a pathway now for investing in the Clackamas Recovery Campus, so that's very exciting, in Hospital 2059. And these last two I really celebrate. We are ensuring that at least one non-opioid prescription drug is covered by insurance as an appropriate alternative for any opioid prescription drug. And then we also are requiring the Oregon Health Authority to develop a non-opioid directive form to be available to Oregonians electronically, so that they can direct that they do not want non-opioids. So really trying to address those challenges before they start. We protected consumers' credit privacy and rights, disconnecting medical debt from credit scores in the state policy. This will exist now. We've protected child data privacy for location sharing and targeting for advertising, et cetera, and our car data sharing as well. We also extended our right to repair work that we did on cell phones in a previous session to wheelchair repair, a very expensive repair. In terms of natural resources, we are protecting -- this is something also that we've worked with the city of Wilsonville on, making sure that when we have public spaces that agencies have made available for recreational use, that there is recreational immunity that'll allow for more access to our precious spaces. We've also passed wildfire funding and policies that ideally will mitigate the risk of wildfire, prevent some increases in insurance costs, and make that more affordable. And then we've addressed wildfire maps. I focus a lot on reducing toxins in our environment, and this session took on PFOS, forever chemicals. We banned it from AAA firefighting phone because there are safer alternatives. And we also are going to be studying agricultural lands to understand the Oregon story of these prevalent chemicals and find out where it is and can be found in Oregon. We also uplifting this on behalf of many constituents who reached out, who have small commercial gardens in and around the cities of Senate District 13. Many of our small commercial gardens wanted access to groundwater, so House Bill 3372 addresses that and allows for people to water in their commercial gardens on certain size of property. Dr. Sue Ricky Smith is a former superintendent. I am a former educator. You are represented by people who really center the needs of our families, students, and educators. So we have a lot of policies that we'll be talking about in our education spaces as your legislators. This session, we're talking a lot about and celebrating stabilizing our current service level calculations, modernizing those calculations to make sure that they are more accurate. And I'm also really dialing down inaccurate data and protecting student data as well. I've passed two -- these last two bills on this slide are also to address when students return to the classroom after a brain injury, and also if students are hospitalized, we want to make sure that they're not dropped from enrollment for our 10-day drop rules. So again, lots more policies than we have time to discuss. On this slide, these are just a few of the investments that Representative Ricky Smith and I are delivering to our district. So we have advocated for and secure the $1 million for the Boone Bridge. Now, that'll help us advance in that next step, which will be geotechnical investigation, archaeological and historical research, analysis of the wetlands and waters, and making sure that we are showing the federal government that we are getting ready for federal investment on the state highway, on this interstate highway that is our connector between California and Washington. We want to make sure that we make a strong case that we are putting in the Oregon investment to get it shovel-ready and ask for that federal funding in the future. Thank you again, Mayor O'Neill, for your partnership, and we will take next steps in upcoming sessions to do the $2 million and the $3 million asks that are the next steps in that particular stair step that we're on. We've also advocated, as your legislators, for housing infrastructure dollars, specifically in Sherwood, and emergency preparedness dollars specifically in the community of Tigard. So some past investments from the state that we can celebrate, really delivering this year specifically, we're seeing the Wilsonville Voella Affordable Housing is nearly complete. The dollars that I brought in are helping to fund the ground floor services, so that's very exciting. And the Tigard Shelter is the closest shelter serving Wilsonville. Just Compassion added 60 new beds, thanks to some ARPA dollars that I helped direct to that project, and they opened their doors earlier this year. The Sherwood Pedestrian Bridge will have their ribbon cutting later this fall. And the Clackamas County Courthouse, which was, I believe, $62 million of state funding, helped to open that improved courthouse, which the old courthouse, you may know, is perched on the edge of a crumbling cliff above the river. And we wanted to make sure that we have a resilient facility that has trauma-informed justice, ADA-accessible justice as well, and is a much safer and resilient facility overall. So it's grand opening. If you haven't seen it, I do encourage you to go out there. It's a really important investment that we've made as a state, and hopefully can serve as a blueprint for the way that we can move forward in Washington County, where we also are going to be advocating for a similar project to provide enough courtrooms for the growing county. We also, I want to celebrate the $1 million broadband investment as well in our Senate District. King City, Sherwood, and Wilsonville divided that $1 million in broadband, and it's serving buildings like the new Public Works in Wilsonville, providing some redundancies in the new economic development area of Coffee Creek, and some other improvements along the way. So really exciting to see some of those things delivering for the community. This is a session in summaries. I'm going to gloss over it, but we did send 640 bills to the governor, and I think it's also worth highlighting that the public engagement portion of this slide shows that we had over 100,000 pieces of written testimony on the bills that we discussed this session, and almost 20,000 people signed up to testify in our public hearing. So a lot of work done. This is the work that I will do going forward, and I won't go too far into it, but generally, you can count on me to make sure that we are continuing to structure at the state level strong schools, really prioritizing vulnerable communities. I focus a lot on special education and medically fragile children, adults in custody at Coffee Creek, and making sure that we are supporting our early childhood workforce professionals who are grossly underpaid. I also really want to make sure we're addressing our climate future. One of those efforts has been to understand that intersection of education, transportation, infrastructure, and climate in the electric school bus investments. And then I will come back and fight hard for our animal rescue entities, who are doing very important work right now at our overpopulation of cats and dogs in our state after COVID, and everybody got a COVID puppy, and fewer spays and neuters. We really need to address the -- humanely address the overpopulation, and our animal rescue entities need our help. I do monthly events, town halls, and coffees. You can visit our websites. Dr. Sue and I both have websites, and you can look at the oregonlegislature.gov webpage to find our websites and sign up for our newsletters. We have a town hall, joint town hall, in one month in Tigard. It's our end-of-session joint town hall with Majority Leader Bowman, and that'll be at the Tigard Library. And then I'll be doing another town hall at the Twelton River Wildlife Refuge this Friday at 1:30 p.m., so all are welcome at these events. I'm happy to take questions. I tried to go quickly, but this is my phone number and email address, and Representative Ricky Smith's are also easy to find now with a Google search in Oregon Legislature. And so the end of our phone numbers are always the district number that we serve, so mine ends in 13 for Senate District 13, and Representative Ricky Smith's ends in 26. All right. I think with that, I'll step back and find out if you have questions for us, or I don't want to put Dr. Sue on the spot, but if you have questions for either of us, we'd be happy to try to respond.
Thank you for that. Any questions from anybody?
No, I mean, it was just kind of overwhelming. You've got so much stuff done across the board and so many different issues. So thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. And if there's something that you prioritize in the session that I didn't mention today, it is just, you know, a reflection of the fact that so much work was discussed this session, and I didn't have time to talk about it all in one slideshow. So happy to have follow-up conversations with any of you about the topic areas that you are most concerned about.
Counselor Chevlin?
Thank you. Thank you both for coming tonight. And Senator, I'm exhausted just looking, listening to all the work you've done. You know, what made the press was the failed transportation bill, but this is so important and so good to hear, all the work going forward and everything that has passed and that you've worked on. We look forward to working with Representative Ricky Smith as well, so thank you both for coming.
Thank you, Counselor Chevlin. Yes, and we are really passionate about making sure that we do address the transportation needs of the state of Oregon in either a special session or future sessions. We understand that there are a lot of jobs on the line, that winter snow plowing in the passes is on the line, that restriping roads is important. We need graffiti removal. We need to make sure that there is roadside response that's effective, and so we are taking that very, very seriously, and we'll be looking at finding solutions that we can pass through the entire process. Thank you.
I'll only add that I don't know how you did, but your transition from being a representative to Senator and coming onboard as our new representative, that on top of the largest volume of bills that have been introduced, I think, in the history of Oregon, that was pretty impressive. So thank you. Thank you for your service for us.
Thank you. And I'll just say that we can't do it without a strong team. My Chief of Staff, Marcella Martinson, is here, and I really want to appreciate the work of Marcella and the rest of our office. And then, Dr. Sue, I don't know if you want to mention, you're an incredible team and the work that they've done.
My Chief of Staff, Latonya Blanco now, was Myers, and she got married on July 4th, and so we celebrated with her. But really, I'm very grateful for what I have inherited in my office, and the same priorities that Senator Neuron Missland has shared with all of you this evening, I share. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to work side by side with her as a team. While we may have other committee assignments, the things that she has highlighted this evening are priorities for me as well. And so please do not hesitate to reach out to either one of us, and I will be reaching -- my office will be reaching out to you individually so that we can get to know you and your concerns. But we are a team, and we are a team that seeks to serve. Wilsonville, Sherwood, King City, Tigard, because we know that's how great work gets done, is when we work in partnership with our cities and our counties, because you are closest to the work. And as And as a superintendent, I always appreciated it when people came and talked to me and walked my halls and understood the work that we were doing prior to making legislation. And I have the same commitment to my cities and counties as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I want to say one more thing about your incredible team, too. Representative Ricky Smith's Chief of Staff served as Chief of Staff for Senator Aaron Woods as well, and has really been helpful in making the transition that you talked about very smooth for everyone. So a lot of work from both our Chiefs of Staff and our supportive legislative assistants as well. So really appreciate all their work in serving the districts as well.
I wanted to offer a word of thanks to the city, to your Park and Recs manager, and to Everett Wild this afternoon, working with Latonya Blanco relative to a plaque in the late senator's memory and that event, and did it with such great care and thoughtfulness. And we look forward to celebrating that with you all here, I think sometime in August. But wanted to say thank you to the city for their care.
And for the committee, there's been a plan in place that we've been trying to put together to where we have a remembrance and ceremony and a plaque, a dedication of a bench. And we're in the process, we're working in partnership with Senator Aaron Woods' family and others and your offices. Thank you for your help on that. It looks like it's getting.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for your presentation.
Absolutely. All right.
Okay, we will now move to community input and announcements portion of the City Council meeting agenda. This is an opportunity for visitors to address the City Council on any matter concerning city's business or any matter over which the council has control. It's also the time to address items not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight, so don't ask to speak now for that public hearing. That's later. Staff will make every effort to respond to questions raised during community input as quickly as possible following the council meeting. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please, when conveying your remarks, whatever they may be, please speak to the council as a whole and not directly to any one member of council during your comments. Also, please note, you can use the podium or sit at the tables in front of council, whatever makes you feel more comfortable. Please make sure you talk into the microphone at either location. To comment before council in person or virtually, you must sign up either by completing a speaker card at the side of the room or by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will need to provide your name, address, and topic you will be discussing. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the city council's website, As a reminder, when you begin, your comments, state your name for the record and state your address, or state that your address is provided on your speaker card. Please note that this is not the only way to communicate with the council or me. You are welcome to submit information writing or via email. Additionally, I encourage you to schedule a meeting with me or any of our counselors to discuss your concerns further. Now with that, I will call George Dunn.
Hello. I'm George Dunn, resident information on the card. First, I want to start by saying last month's events were terrific. I really enjoyed the Juneteenth, the Pride event, and the Fourth of July, the laser show blew my mind. That was the coolest thing I have seen, completely unexpected. So kudos to them, and kudos to the Park and Rec guy who I've seen out there on his hands and knees picking weeds. That is thankless work. With all that, I wanted to speak to the proposed street parking regulations discussed today in the work session, not just as a resident, but as a neighbor who believes that our public spaces should reflect our shared values. As an American, I believe every human being has a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. As such, I believe that's important, that our policies, regulations should strive to uphold those values and rights. There's a fine line between managing public spaces and policing poverty. Right now, I fear that we're drifting towards the latter. These are regulations with potential to impact humans, human beings' right to liberty. So I have to ask, are the people living in the RVs, are they consulted in these decisions? Are their voices heard in the forums, or these discussions and decisions are being made? I know a lot of them happen, a lot of it seems to be happening and unfolding on Facebook forums, and I can't help but wonder if these spaces are open to all perspectives. For every resident who might feel inconvenienced by an RV parked in an empty lot, there's others whose life may be directly affected by this policy, whose home, whose dignity, and whose freedom could be compromised. As someone who's seen friends and coworkers homeless and living in the backseat of their car, I can testify that this would directly affect their rights. There's nothing worse than being homeless and losing your home because you had a car that was broken down sat inside a road for too long. So what I see is we can either keep kicking the puck down the road, hoping discomfort and poverty solves itself, or we can decide that it stops here, and we can choose to choose not to diffuse our responsibility to one another. Because of this, because this isn't just about vehicles and property, it's about people, real people, many of whom are part of our community who need our support more than any surveillance. So I'm asking this council to focus on making policy that elevates, not isolates, their neighbors, ensures our community remains a place where freedom isn't reserved for the fortunate, but extended to everyone willing to call it home. Thank you.
Rick Wallace?
My name is Rick Wallace. My address is on the speaker card. As usual, thank you to the hard-working city staff, city council, and various volunteer committee members for making Wilsonville such a great place to live. I was on the bike tour of the Harts around Wilsonville organized by SMART this last Saturday, and it was a blast. Tons of people from all over Wilsonville showed up with their bikes, including the mayor. It was fun to have a casual and sociable ride around town with such great people and meet some of the artists behind the Harts. One of my favorite parts of the route was the new segment of Fifth Street that connects Old Town to Kinsman Road, since it has wide and safe protected bike lanes. It will be nice once the I-5 pedestrian bridge in Wilsonville is completed, because once we visited the Harts in Villebois, we had to backtrack to Wilsonville Road, whereas with the pedestrian bridge, we could have biked directly down Barber and into town center. I encourage everyone to make use of our bikable city, and I encourage the city to continue to plan for bike, walk, and rollability. Thank you for your time.
Mary Rooney?
Hi, my name is Mary Rooney. My address is on the speaker card. I also participated in the bike ride this past Saturday, and I just want to say it was so much fun. I really hope that there are more planned bike rides sponsored by the city and SMART. I am new to biking around Wilsonville, and I was taken aback by how bikable the city is. I've been going on bike rides every day since, and today I biked from the West Side to Canyon Creek Road, and I was delighted to discover that there's a dedicated bike lane the entire way there. So I encourage more sponsored bike rides. I think that really helped show me that this place is bikable, and you can safely bike around Wilsonville. Thank you.
Say my hands up, okay. All right, well, that's it for community comments. Now let's turn to council comments, liaison reports, and meeting announcements. Council President Berry?
Okay, I'll kind of keep it brief and talk about the highlights. So recently, I got to attend the Wilsonville Wildlife Presentation by Carrie Rapapoles, our Natural Resources Manager, with his consultant, Leslie Bliss Ketchum. And they talked about how animal movement is being observed around Wilsonville by cameras that are posted in various areas of the city. And I think there is a display down at the library right now, if you're interested in learning more about that, and also on the website. But it was a really great presentation, and it was just, I mean, you don't see roadkill in Wilsonville, and it's because we have a lot of culverts for the animals to be able to verse from one area to the other area. And anyway, I really, really appreciate staff taking their time and teaching citizens. We had a pretty full house that attended. And speaking of the library, I wanted to mention that, maybe people have seen, but the library now has a bicycle that takes books to different events and activities. Has anybody seen that yet? Yeah, I see a few hands. So keep your eyes open for that. I think that's a really cool thing that they're doing that for their outreach. And let's see, on Wednesday, July 16th, I attended the C4 Metro Subcommittee, which is an opportunity for the different representatives of agencies and cities within Clackamas County to get together and share ideas. The key items on that agenda were the Interstate Bridge replacement, housing coordination strategy update, and the Metro Future Vision Project. And then upcoming, the mayor mentioned that Counselor Chevlin and the mayor and myself will be attending the C4 Retreat this weekend. It's going to be an opportunity to connect with our colleagues and discuss important policy topics, identify our goals and issues to address in this upcoming year. That's my report.
Counselor Dunwell?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick call-outs. I do want to recognize, let me pull this up very quickly. Bear with me. One of the officers with Clackamas County, Officer Campos, Melissa Campos, Officer Deputy Campos, was recently called out and received two commendations. One was for, it came from a citizen who was, and let me read this to you, who was deeply moved by the care and empathy Deputy Campos showed while delivering a difficult death notification. So impressed by her compassion, the individual contacted our office to personally commend her to a supervising sergeant. The second commendation stemmed from her role as a primary deputy in the case of a missing 10-year-old autistic child. She demonstrated exceptional communication with all involved and coordinated a swift, efficient law enforcement response. The child was safely located within just 10 minutes. So she's a relatively recent addition to the force here and is bringing not only the value of reminding all of us as citizens that our police force does more than enforcement, they also sometimes do the very, very heavy lifting that is delivering death notices and delivering, being in the place during, as I say, during sometimes the person's worst moment. So being a part of that and appreciating that is a critical part of what our police force does, and we are so fortunate that we have the relationship with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, because as we see these rotations come through with some of these new officers, we do get exposure to additional value that they bring. So not only do we have those who are tenured, who have been in Wilsonville for quite some time, but then we get to see these new faces who really shine a bright light into what a really great officer can do. So I'd really like to amplify those commendations that she received. And then also, I did actually attend the final DEI presentation. It was excellent. I know that we'll be gearing up for the next year, and I continue to remind all of the citizens of the community that participation in those, you always walk away having learned something about our community, and it's great work on their part. And then I also attended the Juneteenth event, which was excellent, and appreciated the speaker, and then the surprise visit by our governor and her wife really kind of amplified the evening. I also want to, I know that most of you weren't here during our work session, but I do want to bring up the fact that there have been a lot of conversations in the community regarding nuisances and ordinances and compliance and all of the things that we are dealing with as a city. And we did have a lengthy presentation during our work session tonight by our legal team regarding code compliance specifically. We recognize on council that the realities of our suburban city include the growing pains, and those include nuisances of parking and some of the other issues that sometimes affect the quality of life for the rest of us. So we are working very hard to balance both fiscal responsibility and quality of life as we address how we move forward, while also continually reminding ourselves that we have to maintain compassion. So thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
It feels like we've been, it's been a long time since we've been here, but we're back. And over the last several weeks, I've met with a lot of different constituents, had a lot of conversations, received a legislative update from our lobbyist, Greg Leo, and gotten a lot of time with the family, with my boys over summer, priceless time that, you know, try to get all I can right now. Maybe the highlight of that was this past Wednesday, the boys got to call Bingo over at the community center, and they were much gentler on my sons than they were on me and probably on the mayor and anyone else who has called Bingo over there.
They can be pretty tough.
Yeah, but overall, I think the boys did a good job, too. I think there was maybe one almost missed call, but they did. They did a fantastic job and had a lot of fun, and it was nice to get over there and interact with some of our community members with Bingo. So besides that, it's been, it's been a little bit quiet this summer, which is probably a good thing, and that's all I've really got.
Thank you. Counselor Chevlin?
Thank you. Well, speaking of code compliance and making sure our city streets are looking good, I want to thank the city staff, particularly our legal and our leadership team for cleaning up the, or having the property cleaned at the Fry's location and Sherry's. So if you haven't been by there, please take a look. It looks much better. It's not perfect, but Sherry's looks really, really good. Lot of vegetation cut down there and also at the Fry's property. I had an email from a citizen about two weeks ago about how unhappy he was, and I know we've all heard that. And I reached out to city staff, and they helped me get back to the citizen and also let them know that the work was going to be underway. So it looks really, really nice, and I want to thank everyone for pushing that through and making sure that gets done. I'd like to announce and invite everyone here and anyone here that's listening to the first annual Wilsonville Festival of Music at Charbonneau. This is, as they say, the first annual. It's the blues for schools. This was made possible by a $10,000 grant from the city of Wilsonville. The Wilsonville Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission provided the grant. The event is coming up this August 2nd and 3rd, a Saturday and Sunday, so it's a Saturday evening and all afternoon Sunday up until 9:00 PM. This is a ticketed event. You can get tickets by going to www charbonneauarts.org. But I also have a number of little flyers. I think I brought 20 of them that are over by the speaker card area, so please pick one up. There'll be two stages. There'll be a number of different blues artists that will be performing. There'll be food trucks. There'll also be a number of arts and craft vendors and sales. Any proceeds, all proceeds, go to both the Wilsonville and the Canby School Districts for art, fine arts and music programs. So we're really happy that we're able to support that as a city, and we welcome everyone to come by Charbonneau. I've attended a variety of different meetings over the last period of time. Many of them have already been mentioned. I was very proud to take my two granddaughters to I was very proud to take my two granddaughters to the Juneteenth celebration where they got to really learn about what Juneteenth was and is and why it's so important to understand our heritage and also for them to have a chance to meet the governor and her wife as well. I attended the Wilsonville Korean War Commemoration. What was particularly moving to me about that was that there are still a few veterans that are still alive and able, that were able to attend. Many of them were represented by their family members, but in several cases, they walked or rolled in, and it was very touching. And I thank the mayor and council president Barry for the wreath presentation, and it was a wonderful and very touching ceremony. I continue to meet up for coffee with a variety of different citizens, so please reach out to me. My city email is available on our website. I'd love to hear from you about what your ideas are for the city, your dreams, and what you'd like to see. Lastly, I'm going to a training for the Coffee Creek Through a Child's Eyes event. Very important event. This is where children of the incarcerated women come to Coffee Creek Correctional Facility that is occurring on August the 10th. So I'll be able to report back about that. I'm attending that with Councilor President Barry. But there's some training upcoming before that, and we'll be helping out with arts and crafts and just different ways to help the youngsters connect with their mothers and actually have some fun. So looking forward to that as well. So be sure and pick up your little flyer for the Charbonneau Arts Festival. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the items on consent?
Resolution number 3176, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with GT Landscape Solutions for construction of the Frog Pond West Neighborhood Park Project, capital improvement project number 9175. Resolution number 3188, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Dowell LLC to provide engineering consulting services for the Stafford Road Improvement Project, capital improvement project number 42192111 and 1158. Resolution number 3204, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Garland/DBS Inc. to provide services for water treatment plant re-roofing project. Resolution number 3206, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the professional services agreement with Dowell LLC for the Willamette Water Supply Pipeline Main 1.3 PLM 1.3 Construction Inspection of the City Infrastructure Project, capital improvement project number 1127. Resolution number 3207, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving master professional services agreements for on-call civil engineering services and related services in minutes of the June 16, 2025 city council meeting.
Thank you. Council President Barry can have a motion approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there, well, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. Tonight, there is no new or continuing business. We will now proceed with our public hearing. Tonight, we'll have a public hearing to consider on first reading ordinance number 899. I will ask the city attorney to read the title of the measure.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 899, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, CFECC, Parking Compliance and Development Code, Parking Compliance Development Code Amendments.
God, you read so fast. The proposed measure comes to us as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with the staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I'll ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I'll ask if anyone present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask anyone who is on Zoom, on the Zoom meeting, who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councillors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed, council deliberates, and I will announce the result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that refrain from repeating testimony already given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, but you want to ensure you have legal standing in the public record, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. Since this is a legal process for considering a land use decision, we need you to state your name and address for the public record. The public hearing is now open at 8:15 PM. Mr. Daniel Pauly, please provide the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. All right. So we're here tonight for a public hearing on ordinance number 899. As stated, the criteria applicable to this proposal can be found in Exhibit B to the ordinance, which has been entered into the record and made available to the public as required. So I will go ahead, I'll do my best to be brief, but also want to make sure I give enough context for someone that has not been through a lot of work sessions on this, as well as make the record clear for this public hearing. But for those that may not know, the council has discussed this in a number of work sessions and is quite up to speed on this topic. So in terms of background, this is really driven by the State Climate Friendly and Equal Communities Rules, which came, which a number of agencies developed following an executive order from Governor Brown around meeting the state's pollution, climate pollution goals. Collectively, we're trying, these rules that came out of this, which include things related to parking reform, but also there's a number of other things that we'll discuss in the coming months and years. But parking's one component. Together, we, I'm calling this the CFECC parking rules, is really what is driving what we're doing tonight. So beyond compliance with the state rules, whenever we're opening up the code, opening up the hood, just sort of say that we're looking also for ways to improve functionality of development in the city as we make any things that are mandated by the state as well. So in drafting these rules and giving this direction to jurisdictions throughout the state, really the purpose of these parking rules is to remove or substantially reform minimum parking requirements that are in zoning codes throughout the state or have been, with a finding that these minimum requirements have tended to lead to inefficient land use, make communities less walkable, and lead to more pollution from driving. So there's two components of this, for lack of a better term, Parking A and Parking B. And I'll step through both of these independently, but though they are interrelated. So Parking A has been in effect for some time now, and it really limits parking, these minimum parking requirements, especially near transit, which for Wilsonville is within three-quarters mile of the West Trent Station, as well as one-half mile of Smart Bus Routes 4 and 2X, which that rule alone overrides existing parking minimums in much of Wilsonville. The only areas not included in that are Charbonneau, the western portions of Vilbois, and some northwestern industrial areas. So what we've seen, so this has been in effect, and we have reviewed developments under this, and what we've seen generally is while minimums are no longer required, developers will still consider market demand and financing needs when deciding how much parking to build. The proposed code amendments that are before the council tonight align the local regulations with the state rules already in effect and also include the new requirements for EV-ready spaces in multifamily and mixed use that have also been in effect for some time. So I'm going to move on to Parking B, but before that, again, that interrelatedness between Parking A and Parking B, here's a map of those areas covered by the Transit Proximity Rule, which really plays into the decision-making around certain components of Parking B. So Parking B has two components. First one is choosing from a menu, the state provider regarding parking minimum reform. And the second one part is a component is parking area design standards reform, particularly around tree canopy and sustainable practices in designing parking lots. So this table shows what the options were that were presented by the state, where again, in any of these options, majority of the city, there's no parking minimum under Parking A. But really, looking through this, we had quite a bit of discussion. I appreciate those discussions we've had with the public, the council, and the Planning Commission on this. In the end, Parking, Parking, the option one makes the most sense in Wilsonville, context particularly considering that most of the city is already exempt under Parking A. It was, it was found that the cost and complexity of Option 2 and 3 really didn't pay dividends for what impact it would actually have on the ground. So thus, with the amendments before the council tonight, minimum parking standards are removed citywide. So to, moving on to parking design standards, to understand really what's proposed, I wanted to touch on really what are, what we do regulate and what we've regulated for years around parking design. It includes things like screening, landscaping, the amount of tree canopy or trees in the parking space, the parking area and where they're located, as well as pedestrian connections and designing drive aisles. Additionally, for larger parking areas such as that, like at Argyle Square or Fred Meyer, there's additional standards around wider landscaping areas, increased amounts of trees, and street-like functions along large drive aisles. So next, let's review then how these existing parking standards align or don't align with the new CFECC rules. To understand that, it's helpful, we found it helpful to break this into kind of three tiers based on the size of parking areas, with the lowest tier being 40, less than 40 spaces, the middle tier being 40 to 200 spaces, and the highest tier being the more than 200 spaces, those larger parking areas. So the smaller areas will remain in compliance, so really no substantial changes there. Same for the larger areas. Really, the change primarily comes in that middle tier, the 42 to 200 spaces. And here's a visualization of what 40 and 200 spaces may look like as one example. One is kind of the first bay here at City Hall for 40 spaces and 200 spaces over in front of Goodwill, and the, and the smaller ten is just to the south. So one, which we talked about in the work session, kind of a more complex part of these rules, it surrounds the amount of tree canopy in parking lots. Simply put, there's really two options the rules give us. Either require 40% parking lot tree canopy for all parking spaces over 40, are all parking areas over 40 spaces, or require 30% with an option to install solar panels in lieu of that last quarter of the required parking, parking lot trees. After good discussion with Planning Commission Council, we gravitated towards this latter option, and so that has been incorporated into the code. So with that, really what we end up with, to reiterate on the parking design standards, is for less than 40 spaces, the same code as exists today, or for 40 to 200 spaces, the general design standards of today plus the enhanced tree or solar option standards. And for more hundred, for more than 200 spaces, the existing enhanced design standards plus this additional solar option. And finally, I will note, thanks to some eagle eyes on my staff, one edit that needs to be made that's substantial enough to note tonight, it's page eight of 26 of Exhibit A to the ordinance on page 254, 325 of your packet. The addition is highlighted in yellow on this slide. The sentence just wasn't complete and didn't make sense, so added the words to make it complete and make it make sense, which disregards if, looking at a table of all the parking requirements, when you have like different types of uses in a development, you just sum those all up to come up with what your standard is, just to provide that clarification, which is consistent with current code. And just as we edited it, we edited too much of the language out of Lookslang, so adding some of that existing language back in.
Dan, can you, can you say that reference one more time just for the motion? So I've got it.
Yes, so it's page eight of 26 of Exhibit A to the ordinance. It's letter C on page 254 of 325 of the packet.
Thank you.
And my apologies for making that motion a little more complicated. And as noted, the Planning Commission did pass on a recommendation for adoption, and that was unanimous. So with that, I'm open for questions. Thank you.
And councillors have any questions, the staff at this time? Councilor Chevlin?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dan, for your presentation. Thank you for your presentation. I just have a question. It's very simple. I just don't know the answer. I tried to find it in the packet. For the solar panel requirement, then are those panels then hooked into the grid? How does, how does that work? How do we retrieve the energy from the panels?
So the rules don't specify? So it's whatever the standard practice would be, I would, I would say.
What would we do here in Wilsonville?
I haven't installed solar panels in Wilsonville, so I don't know.
I think it is put back into the grid. There's a process that you have to go through with PGE.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, the staff? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any public testimony? Okay. Nothing on Zoom? All right. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to testify on this proposal? Please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, seeing none. Does staff have anything further to add to the record at this time, or does city council have any additional questions of staff?
I have nothing additional. Nothing additional.
Okay, and I don't think council is either. Okay. Hearing no further questions and everyone having an opportunity to testify, I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance number 899 closed at 8:27 PM. It is now time for council to consider ordinance number 899 on first reading. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Dunwell.
I would just like to go on the record, as I've stated in the past, that I, although I do, I will be voting in favor of this, I, I again do not like the fact that we are being pushed into a corner by the state to comply with the rules rather than allowing us to drive our own destiny as a city.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Councilor Chevlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I observed while I, over the last few weeks, and as I read the packet in preparation for tonight's meeting, we've spent as a city a fair amount of time, a good, fair amount of time, making sure that we have bike lanes. In fact, we heard testimony this evening about how wonderful it was to bike around our city and how wonderful that is. So we have bike lanes, we have pedestrian lanes. We sure is, is that we don't put those plans forward at the expense of adequate parking. So we just want to make sure that we have a balance and that we don't neglect the fact that people are still going to drive in our city. And we want to make sure that while we don't waste space and pollute the environment more with parking lots that are far too big for the facility that they serve, we want to make sure that we have adequate parking so that our citizens know that we're finding a balance and finding that quality of life so that we can still take our vehicles, electric, gas-powered, whatever they are, but then if we choose to walk or bike or use public transit, that we have already established a wonderful infrastructure for that. Thank you.
Councilor Cunningham.
I'll echo those sentiments from the other councillors, although I will be voting yes on this because it's the best option of three bad options. It feels like a one-size-fits-all solution from the state for a community that has done a really good job of managing a lot of these things already. It feels like we're being penalized because we have a robust transit system. transit system, which is unfair. I recently visited the Oswego Grill up in Lake Oswego, and they have a woefully undersized parking lot. If you ever go up there during a lunch hour, get ready for about a quarter mile walk. And I'm afraid that this one-size-fits-all approach is going to be something that trickles down into our community, especially as we look at developing town center and what this means for that development with a distinct likelihood of a lack of parking in a pretty tight area. So although I don't like it, it's the best option of the three bad options.
And I'll just add, I echo everything that's been said by my fellow counselors. While these are state-required changes, I believe staff has done an exceptional job incorporating them in a way that's transparent and practical for Wilsonville, and I appreciate your efforts.
And I agree with all of the above.
With that, it's now time for council to consider a formal motion. Do I have a motion on ordinance number 899, an ordinance of the city of Wilsonville adopting the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Parking Compliance Development Code Amendments?
Dan, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Just make sure we get it right.
That's why I put it towards the
As shown on the screen.
Yes.
As shown on the screen.
Yes. So it would be a motion to approve on first reading ordinance number 899 with the correction that is identified in the staff presentation to page eight of 26 of exhibit A.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion's been made by council president Barry and seconded by counselor Dunwell.
Cunningham.
Excuse me. Gosh, Cunningham, I apologize. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor to approve ordinance number 899 as read on first reading, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Okay. Now turning to city manager business.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, I got the distinct impression from council that you would like to get moving on the town center public engagement process. So we had an informal meeting with CFM advocates to talk about process, history. And while not everything is flushed out, I think there's two tasks that we could get going on with your direction. I can, I can start on that process. So task one would be an interview of each one of you to figure out what your, your hopes and aspirations are for town center and the urban renewal district that's proposed for that. And that could take an hour or two hours, but that would be task one. And then the second discreet task that will inform all other tasks would be either two or three stakeholder focus groups. One would be composed of people that are skeptical and/or don't want to see, or have some concerns about the town center and/or the urban renewal district. The other would be the opposite of that, folks that want to see both of those happen. And I'm thinking that maybe a third would be appropriate as well, which would be people in the community that aren't engaged, don't know anything about urban renewal or the town center, if they're out there. I'm sure that there are some folks out there like that. So those two tasks, we would gather that data. And I'm, I'm told that council could observe all of those focus groups as well. You couldn't participate in them, but you could observe the conversation and the questions. So you know what they're being asked and what the conversation is. So those two then would inform whatever follow-on stuff, whether it's a, a task force that's appointed to, for a long-term process, whether it be town halls or surveys, all that stuff would follow on after those first two tasks are done. So if you're okay with that, I can get the ball going with my own authorizations and start that process. If that sounds reasonable to you, I'm happy to answer any questions. I may not have all the answers right now. And as we get going on this, and as I get information, I will share that with you as well. But those would be the first two steps in the process.
Counselor Chevlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brian. So CFM is the consulting group. That's who would interview us individually?
Yes.
And then they would also be present at these forums where we would hear from various community members.
The focus groups.
Yeah.
They wouldn't be running the focus groups because they don't have that particular, that particular expertise. It would be someone like DHM, who does a lot of these kinds of things, or another consulting firm that does that kind of work. Yes.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, I do. What's the, the cost to bringing in the consulting group?
We're working on that.
We budgeted.
We're, we're
No. Okay.
So that would be a supplemental budget. So those are all questions I have, too.
Yep.
So as I get that information and there's a contract that I'm ready to say yes to, I would bring that back. I have authorization up to $100,000, but I would still need the supplemental budget authorization from council to get moving.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I mean, for the perspective of this member of council, I'm all for proceeding on that.
I got the general sense that you're all in agreement that I can start and then bring back information as I get it. All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Now turning to legal business.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. With that, if, unless there's any objections, we're adjourning at 8:36 PM.